Second and third and hungry bunch in the back of the room. Moved by Mrs. Park, second by myself, all in favor. I thank you very much. Pass if you have a public comment. Okay, I will turn this over to Dr. Gray, and thank you everybody.
Thank you, President Marco. Good afternoon for our presentation and welcome back to our leadership team, which is working today. Two hours strategic plan update. Everybody in the room should be getting, if you don't have it now, it'll be coming around shortly. The most updated and revised strategic plan with the presentation and all the data. I wanna, before we move forward, I want us to look back for a second and realize where we've come. We started something back in July of twenty-two. When we started to have planning meetings between our leadership team and our Board of Education, which was something that I've said before, it's very unique in our education world. They have that kind of communication. But more importantly, what we've done since this time, since July of two thousand and forty-two, is that we've created, again, something for education that usually happens in corporate world. It matters to have a plan. And that loop is the check-ins, which we've had our check-ins, we've had the meetings when we create the strategic plan. And that's what we left to today, where we're providing you with an update on our progress. And today you're going to hear from our team. You will hear, based on feedback from the board, is to provide you with where we have been successful in our goals. And perhaps why is it exciting about why we're just being successful? But then also, in your packets, you're going to see that some of the goals are in progress. And we're going to tell you why they're in progress and where we are with them. And as we talked about in our planning meetings, that there may be goals in our plan that we could not, and we're going to share those with you. Share with you the challenge behind every goal. And perhaps something that would be needed in order to accomplish them. And we took that very strongly, that feedback from our board at our last update meeting. And I hope that you are very pleased today that we've incorporated that feedback into our presentation today. So in front of you, you have our goals. You also have the data that backs up the goals. What you're going to see up here is really just the goals. Going to introduce each team, they'll come up, they're going to introduce their team members. So that you can be sure to put names with faces that you've met many times when you are at events. After each section, we're going to pause to see if you're going to. So that we're not asking you to wait until the very, very end. But each section, if you have a question, it's easier to follow along. It's much easier to listen, knowing that you're going to get a short break to answer any questions that you may have. I'm really excited to share this information with you. There is considerable work in the information that is in front of you. Also, I said this before, but it bears repeating, that you will not find another strategic plan for another school district that's robust as this one. And I challenge anybody to go on and start Googling other schools that are strategic plans. And this work is solid and really gives us a solid base for the first time in a long time to then, when we meet again in a month. Part two, I think actually it's July, is that we have a lot more information that we can then continue that planning loop that I was talking about. Because that's a continuously. So we're going to sit back, relax and take it all in. Like you said, feel free to answer questions at the end of each of these sections. We're going to start with our high school. Drew and Kim and. Welcome to the presentation. Thanks for having us here today. I'm your steward and one of the co-principal of the high school. You also have.
Tim Decker-Tal, one of the co-principal of the high school.
Bill Chang, Assistant Principal of Evan.
Mrs. Jung is holding down the floor twice just three times. So we're going to get heard in there. So we want to talk with you about what we've been up to in high school this year. It's really a strategic plan. I would like to say personally, having worked through the last strategic plan over the previous couple of years, what were really nice about what the work we've done this year. Board, the fact that we have a cabinet, is being able to really work and focus at our site. The last plan developed, we graded in a lot of ways because we worked with all the subjects. But what was really nice about this year's plan was that it gave us the opportunity to really work as a site team, with our teachers, with all of our people and parties at our campus, to really dig into the work. And so we have a presentation for you guys that we're going to kind of go through, starting with this decade for beginning sort of with our academic focus, and then we'll talk about the other.
So just as an overview about the academics, they are all tied to. They're all tied to the US News and World Report scorecard areas that are measured as very public document. Our community and our parents look to that to compare us to our options. But the good news is, a lot of them areas, all of those areas almost overlap with what the California State Dashboard is also publishing. So you have the college and career readiness indicators. So when you see, this is a very ambitious goal because it's an umbrella for many things. AP, so advanced placement testing, the California State Testing, graduation rate, et cetera. So that's why this one is in progress. We don't have the data from those assessments until June, July. So it will be very exciting when we speak with you all before we go into our leadership retreats. And when we touch base early next fall, because we will have all of that information and demonstrate the growth. One thing to say about the scorecard, because you have some of those percentages in front of you, is that we need to keep in mind, both percentages represent the graduated cohort three years prior. So what you have, I believe, is twenty-one, twenty-two. We really need to think about what was happening with the seniors in twenty-nineteen, which was a rocky time. And so the data there is, I don't think really representative of all we can do. We had to take a lot of growth there. Okay, so that is the US News and World Report ranking measuring progress. So how do we know we are making progress towards those those improving our achievement on those indicators? Well, we've asked school-wide, every department to have common assessments and to monitor and define one year's growth in one year's time. So a student may come to me in my class, sort of not on grade level, but we can still measure that they've made a year's worth of progress. But Kathleen, how are we doing that? How are we defining one year's growth in one year's time? Is it standards? Is it grades? Are all of our grades mean different things? Are our assessments actually valid and reliable? Difficult to design an assessment, not let alone ten of them, we're checking in at five-week increments, that is both valid and reliable every time. So I don't think, well, we all agree, we don't think we've met this goal only because we don't trust our data. School-wide, for the first time, every department did common assessments. That's huge. School-wide, we looked at that data together. And, but the good news is, we need a different kind of assessment that is norming what one year's growth is. We think we've found that tool, we're sharing it with different stakeholders and getting feedback on that. And so I think we're already beginning to address that one could argue is in progress. I just feel like we weren't able to measure definitively, and so we're not quite there yet.
And part of that is what we talked about at the last board meeting with the NWA, the diagnostic tool that we uncovered through the strategic planning process, and that's what Ken's addressing.
So we've shared that with department chairs in math, English and science, and they're in the process of studying that tool. They're already talking about how could we. So CAP, we're doing CAP right now. We will have those scores in July, and we'll be looking to see if we were able to move fifty percent of students who are scoring nearly met. So we're targeting those sort of on the borders, and we've got them over there, almost there. And so we'll have a report for you later on on that. Advanced placement testing is just began on Monday. And we are trying to shift the mindset culturally from everyone must have a five to open access for students to have, to experience that we're rigorous curriculum. And we're thinking now in terms of participation rates, how many of our students are being well-prepared to give AP a try? And are they scoring threes and getting those GPA points as a college unit?
If you ever want an excited buzz, come by the high school at the time of AP's exam lets out. We had a student come into the conference room yesterday, we're all in the administrative rooms. What high school senior does this? Came in, all four of you have been sitting in the meeting to tell us about all what she wrote on her FRQs for her. So beside herself, it's exciting. So our teachers have done a great job preparing the kids, kids have done a great job. You guys want to see exciting kids without learning, right now.
Graduation rates. We have a list of students who we are a little bit concerned about. They may be at risk for not graduating on time, and we start monitoring that list very closely as we enter, you know, into the spring semester. And so at that point in the year, we're looking, we're checking weekly, weekly. And at this point, we have, there's data in front of you about that again, but already the data has improved significantly. We are looking, I think it says, it doesn't say this. It's already cut in half. It says forty-three that we're monitoring forty-three students. We actually expected that number to be much higher, considering business learning. That would make eighty-six percent. Our prediction is that the graduation rate has been be much higher than eighty-six, hopefully. That's what that means.
I don't remember you bearing that out.
They are bearing that out. We just today, this morning, the counselors are fixing this data on a ten-week. But we just did the cutoff for grades, the grades review for fifteen weeks, and this number will change again. And so this is definitely overview of the academic goal. Do you have questions about those, or do we need a break at the end of the school?
Let's break it in. Okay, so our second page, again, right here, you can sort of see it here. Our first one is career and we're in progress. What does that mean? We're doing actually really good work. I would say we're very, very close to being in the yes column, probably more so than being in progress. So what I would like to say is that during our, this year, we have essentially, almost all of our couple dozen pathways are at three courses for all. The one lone exception right now is aerospace, which is a singleton class, but we do have another engineering pathway. So right now, we are retooling the aerospace pathway. But otherwise, all of our VAPA and CTE pathways are full three courses. We have increased our student internships this year, and in fact, we've had our CTE advisory panel meet or advisory group meet about a week and a half ago, and talked about how we can even increase that more going next year, so our internships are looking good. And then our increasing dual enrollment operating by the goal of two each year. We actually have done that this year, we've increased our audio production, dual enrollment, and we are in the process for animation as well. So we have meant that one, the two additional courses each year for this year. Campus engagement, we did just engage our students in a very quick two-question survey to kind of bet out how they're feeling connected to the campus. And the results actually came back pretty positive. So ninety percent of our students that took the survey identified that they are involved in an extracurricular that they can choose from, we sort of gave them ideas of what those might be. So ninety percent of our students said they have done something beyond simply coming to school, going to class and leaving. The other question was about their connection to a trusted adult on campus. And this one was interesting, it was lower than those that participated in extracurricular. With about eighty-five percent said that they had a trusted adult. Yet, you know, this is us going through micro answers for each student and saying like, wait, timeout. We have a great relationship with this kid, and they said no. So I think a lot of times, they don't necessarily know what it means to have a trusted adult or the types of conversations that they might have. And the other interesting thing from the campus engagement was that almost no kid said no to both. Meaning, they may not have felt as they had a trust in the adult, but they were participating in extracurricular. Well, they're in support, your code might be adjusted. So we can work on some education there, but it was heartening actually to see that there were very few kids almost done that said no to both. SOS, we did screen basically a hundred percent of our ninth graders, two hundred and fifty on the presentation days. And then we went and all kids out of class to screen the rest that missed those. We triaged, I think, about thirty-three of those students for further follow-up throughout the year. And as the year has gone on, some of them are continuing to see, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't explain what SOS is. This is the signs of suicide screening that we did in the very beginning of the year to look at our students that may be more at risk for some medical health issues. And so they have continued to give support all year long, and some have actually moved out of needing support. I mean, they received the support that they needed, or they were, I'm talking with our normative folks, they're out. PBIS, Mr. Chang.
Thank you. I know one thing, PBIS, positive behavior interventions, words, but I think I know it pretty well. So basically, Mr. Sanchez, so they sent him taking over this year, and he's expanded the nominations from a little over five hundred to over fifteen hundred now. So, you know, a lot, many more kids are getting nominated. He's integrated a lot of ways to get rewards through the program. Not only the nominations, but and ways to nominate, but also like these dessert, desserts, the cookies they get, as well as the spinning the wheel, or just being up there on stage and getting to like, you know, do the little popper and stuff. I mean, I think this, you know, all of the fanfare is really cool for the kids. One quick story I want to share with you. I remember running into a, one of the subs, and one of the subs said, wait, I can hand out these cards or nominate people based on good behavior. I said, yes, and she said, you know, this is kind of changing how I want to run my class now. So, you know, for some, some people, maybe it's like taking a little longer to understand like the impact of this, this program. But there, it's actually making a huge impact for a lot of people, right? And, you know, hearing people say that, you know, like, like we hear it, you know, in the, on campus. But it's, it's, you know, these, these comments don't really get out into the public, right? So I feel like it's, it's really making a positive impact on our classes. And then we also have a great team of young teachers working in the program. We have Link Crew, PBIS, ASB, and shoot, there's one other program, all kind of like working together, supporting each other, like integrating, showing synergy. So I think this program is going to be really successful over the years, and, you know, it's going to kind of put together all these different programs and, you know, the whole.
Awesome. Our last one, and then we'll take questions, is parent engagement. I would say it's been a really restorative year for us this year. When I'm coming out of the pandemic where, you know, A, we were all in our homes. And then the first year back with how strict COVID protocols were, and people weren't allowed on campus. It really has been a reopening of our doors and our gates to the community when it's appropriate this year. So we've worked closely with PTSA, with master classes, where they're coming and learning how to cook the chef's lease. We've done it with, they've just, they've just been incredibly successful mahjong tour across our campuses where it's seventy, seventy-five people coming weekly to learn or play mahjong. So they're coming and they're being part of our campus, and so master class, we're coming up next. So we have really, I think, gone out of our way to try to open the doors back to the parents and the community that's here. And they've met us more than halfway. We've been amazing. Rose Kaiser, Ben Aiden Wolf, and our co-presidents at PTSA, they're incredible, they love to partner with us. So been a fun year actually, getting to work, a lot of places to then have them be on campus for me. That's it for us. Are there any questions?
Well, first of all, thank you all for all your time and effort to put together for all of us. I appreciate our partnership so much and working with you, and I really feel it's been a fantastic year. And I really feel that we've accomplished this before we even had a student making, having looked at it and what I've been showing all year. It's been a really, really good year. And I think the focus that the strategic plan lies towards is really beneficial. That was one of the things we all, for all of us, to first and foremost. And also, I just wanted to congratulate you on the success that you've had on all of these vendors that you're already on the trade. And we think it shows a lot of work and a lot of focus on each other. So really thank you for that. I would also add in our parent engagement, the Career Day for CTE, when you're trying to leave. There were so many people in the community participating in that, one of the just the parents of community, and I think that was probably the greatest. This three that are helping, and I think that was also really brought on in the work of the community. And we've been better, we've been helping the community. And I've been participating in mahjong, really bringing families together. I just want to clarify a couple of questions on this new project. I'm not sure if I am to be correct, because when the graduation rate, are you saying, are you saying it's going down? I think it's.
Eighteen is the reference, twenty nineteen. And what's, what's going down is the number of students that we're monitoring this year because we're worried that they're at risk that they may not graduate on time. So we want that number to be small. And as we keep reviewing it, and the intervention, that number is.
The other question I have is, for the, how you're making progress, you've been having a new path and different teams. Definitely, we're in the first one of the recovery. How is that number looking to give you motivation, whether you are in the present progress?
We do, we do.
I know it's more for the academic.
It, it, there's too much to speak about, just really concisely. But what I would encourage you to do is look at the department progress summaries. There's one for fall, there's one for spring, and you can see the thinking that they've done there. And you can see the evidence that they've been using. At the beginning of the year, and this was huge, that every department created a strategy towards how is our department wanting to achieve the goal of the strategic plan? Because we're, depending on what our content is, we're going to go about that differently. I think that is the bulk of the progress, that we are working toward shared goals. We are having a shared language. We have a definitive strategy, we're monitoring our progress. And we're developing new tools, and we've come to the conclusion that we need better data to be able to say concretely in quantifiable terms what the progress is.
But from when we not last, and when we come out, that may be the learning that we really have, that's data.
Right, right.
So yeah, make it as normal as possible and as reliable across.
And so between then and now, they've been refining their assessments, trying to get closer and closer to that. But it varies department to department. Students are making progress. We need to clarify what one year's progress really means. It can be one thing in my classroom, another thing in your classroom, another thing in this department, another thing in this school or our district. This new tool we're looking at would allow us to compare our progress to millions of data points from schools around the world. So I think we can compare our progress longitudinally, but also if we're comparing with others, we understand the percentile is legitimate. I know, I'm excited about that. Great.
A lot of acrobatic words about what a great job that's going on, and I have a couple of questions. On the graduation rate, how do you figure in students who may opt out, whether they take the GED and actually they graduate, but it affects us, they don't really want to graduation? How does that figure in that part of the?
That is one of the biggest challenges that we've been, comes to our graduating. There's a lot of times that there will be a student that decides to pay the test fee in eleventh grade, let's say. But they still are afforded the right to application. So that's, that's the tricky area. One of the things that we're currently in problems with, and we're trying to figure out is sort of the student through the chest fee, but they love the social aspect in high school. This is happening, actually. How do we actually, if they're coming to campus, how do we try to attract them to actually still going to school working towards progress in the classes and graduate? And so to answer your question, that is one of our biggest challenges.
Do you have any idea how we do that?
But, and I'm going to jump into you, okay? So if they sit for the chest fee and pass, they automatically ding us because they considered a non-grad in the California Department of Education, so for our dashboard. So what we're trying to work on is stopping those students from threatening, well, some of them will sign up in our community and just say, well, I'm going to take the chest fee, and then have that as the, I'm going to go to the SNC route. And once they take the chest fee, they are considered off our records, even though we have board policy that states that regardless that if they pass the chest fee, they can still attend BHU STE. And so that's where Drew is kind of talking about is, we need to work more earlier with our ninth and tenth grade parents of saying, your students shouldn't be taking the chest fee. They should go all the way up until the end. And if maybe they may not be a non-grad, then they should be coming to Moreno High School. That should be the proper path. However, we do have, we just had three students, because I get a quarterly report. We have three students that are in our current eleventh grade class that we know will count against our graduation rate because they did pass the chest fee. However, they're still on our campuses, attending school. And two of them sat for AP exams today.
That's one of the things that's frustrating with our graduation rate.
We can't prevent them from taking it, but this is a global, this is a national issue. This is a BHU STE issue.
I can offer a rate of, like, and if you feel like this would be a relatively larger phenomenon coming out of COVID, where kids were having a hard time adjusting on the morning, on just being back on campus all the time. And they use it almost as sort of like a go-between. Yeah, I'm set, I'm fine, I'll tip my toe back to campus. I, I do totally agree with what Dustin's saying, with our work in ninth grade and tenth grade now, that going back to much more of a sense of normality. That we'll see less of it. It, it was a bigger hype than I'd ever seen.
I also have a relationship with the counseling department and advisors at FFC, who are providing our students with detailed information about how it's not a free path. And there are constraints, and there are commitments that you make if you go that route, that you cannot back away from. So we are also just trying to counsel them, Drew.
When we set goals, that's a very difficult tool set. One of the problems that, for example, so what about to measure one year's growth in one year's time? I mean, that was like a measure, I feel funny setting a goal, it's hard to really set that goal. And that's, that's a problem that I have for the, for the strategic plan. I would like to make sure that there's things that we can actually address. And if we can, why do we use it as an investment? That's my first thought. If I set a goal of something that every student will do so much better by this much on an exam, and man. That's my personal, I, if I set a goal of something that every student will do so much better by this bunch on an exam, and man. I can address it, and I, I, why, if I just think there all are some ridiculous that I can't measure even. That I shouldn't really, how do I, do I set a goal like that?
And that's what we struggled with this year with, and that's why we backtracked in the last one, we felt like we were in the, did not meet that goal. And that's why we're hoping this new tree that we're vetting will help us with those assessments.
Really had us thinking about what is progress.
Well, that I understand.
And so I think that was really valuable, but now we're ready for.
Yeah, if I can't assess.
Being able to measure, yeah, I agree.
Okay, I have a, a couple, um, the triage of students at, you, uh, when you mentioned the thirty-three students. Uh, has that gone up now, or has there been more students that joined into that group that identified those students? Uh, you know, or as a, as a downer, so dragging them up, what's happening?
Yeah, some of those students have continued support all year long. Some of those students have moved out of sort of consistent support from Norman A. Um, we heard a statistic from Norman A recently that just about fifty percent, maybe more than fifty percent of students on campus. This year have gone to visit Norman A to use the funds. So in, we're, the SOS program, we're talking specifically about identifying ninth graders, their first couple of weeks on campus. Would maybe be struggling and trying to keep an eye on them. Um, but it, it really is, Norman A continues to provide support for a lot of our students, right? Around fifty percent this year. So to answer your question, for those ninth graders identified, they've been monitored all year long, some sort of graduated out, if you will, of being. Of us being more worried about where they're at, and others are continuing to seek out whatever you know, perhaps receiving more.
And then I just have a little comment about, uh, with Monadong and the classes that are staple. I, I see that as an opportunity where we might offer more, almost like a zone-in type of activity. Like bridge lessons or whatever, yeah, or maybe some kind of a, an art appreciation. Where you could bring people in, that might be one to, uh, and I know that's a felt end, and we used to have a very elaborate self-ed program. Which kept the community attracted to our thing, that of course that, that went off, that, that stopped. But there might be some more options in that program, like the Marjan or like the cooking classes, I'm told. Those are three pair, three more stakeholders in, that was just a thought that I had. And I just want to thank you again for very comforting. And I was very concerned about being able to test the students and, and that was five weeks' turn back when we met in November. But being able to show that, and I, I think I see by the, uh, these things that you've shown here. That you've been able to really do some assessment, I hope the assessments were good. That I don't know, maybe you worked on some better ones, but, and, and then I thank you again.
Um, wonderful job, I really can see there's alignment across the different departments that have, when you said, it looks like a bell that. Uh, the strategic plans communicate with, you know, among departments, so with all coming towards the same standpoint, I really see that. I think that one thing that is really difficult these days is that, well, we're solid task force, but they don't come out till the end of August. Um, but I feel, I feel like the world is really shifting away from a lot of the standardized assessments. You know, those, I think Harvard Law School and Harvard Medical School, just that we don't pay for the S A P anymore. And we don't care about, um, the M P A T. Um, so that's huge, I mean, that's, that's a big shift. And so it's more of a burden to have to find ways to define, you know, what is improvement, what is excellence. And so in the absence of, of the task force, we haven't come out yet, I'm, I'm really impressed with the framework. Um, that you guys have been working on to identify what is successful, what is one that, what are, what are markers of success? Um, and a lot of that, I feel like is moving towards more qualitative, um, and character-based. Um, you know, engagement, and I think that that's, and for any, the question that needs to be raised, how, and related to what we were talking about. I love the dual involvement, and I think that is, which would completely be a huge hit. Um, but do you have a sense of if the desire to attend a two-year, um, second, post-secondary inclusion version for a year? Has, um, has increased, or do, are there more families who are, if you're sitting in a four-year, or are you seeing a plateau, or?
So, without having that data in front of me, I think sort of over the last ten years.
Yeah, and we decreased our two-year enrollment over the last six years that we've been here with Casey Raleigh at the helm of that. Um, so she's done a really great job of educating our families of the importance of a four-year institution. And also just kind of opening up those gaps of like, a lot of our students used to only primary look at like the U C programs. And really, she's kind of really blown that open of like S C C schools, the Big Ten, well, Pac-12, you know, like, and getting them. To going other places and not just primarily focusing on like, if I don't get into UCLA, I'm not going. Kind of concept, so we, we definitely do still have a population that will attend, uh, that two-year. Uh, for variety reasons that we counsel each individual, but we've definitely seen a shift into the four-year. And we've watched that percentage change over time. And I think with what Kim alluded to earlier, like the more open access that we have to advanced placement. Where the kids feel confident that they can do the college level work. I think we're gonna build more confidence in them advocating to their parents. And, and Judy and I have had conversations soon, just around culturally too, within Beverly Hills. Um, you know, we're seeing, um, you know, younger stu-, our students that are coming through where they're, both of their parents had attended a four-year American institution. Um, and so that's also changing that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would say anecdotally, and I'm, I'm seeing more individual kids coming up to me excitedly saying they're going away. Than I had sometimes years past, you know, where she'd go like, one young lady's. Both of her parents were surprised when she chose to go, she didn't know the same thing, so not super far, but far enough away. And then Dustin's saying, we have amazing cadres and kids, like we have certain in schools right now around the country. Like Syracuse a few years ago was one, right now it's the University of Johnson, S C C schools. So I mean, we really are seeing our kids starting to go out.
Well, they often come talking that talk, I'm going to S and C, I'm going to clear, I don't worry about it. But what we work with them on is, well, you want to keep as many options open as possible. You can change your mind many times along the way, and I agree, well, and so very often they change their mind along the way.
And that is the benefit of us forcing the A P G issue for them, whether they think they want to or not. We're not really letting them close the door on themselves, so then maybe they change their mind in this community.
I hear you say we're going to get a, for example, I was going to get a, uh, result of, uh, I'm just going to wear it, so.
We can absolutely do that, yeah, over, over the last few years, so.
I think that's important for us to think.
Definitely up in the college center, if, if we can get a.
I think that would be, I, not only for us, but the board, but the community, I think would like.
The partisan is final, I think, now, after, I mean, if.
And Ms. Marcus, I just printed your copy for the current, I'll bring it up and just. It's Friday.
I mean, I know you've seen a little report of the Bible on this, but is there any other backing or, uh, to find out, well, how many of our kids ultimately graduate from a four-year? Or go to graduate school, because I would bet that we would do great, you know, that kind of a scoring, you know, long-term study.
So we have Naviance.
Yeah, we just did an extension, I apologize. Uh, no, I'm sorry, because it came through our services, we just actually did a partnership with, uh, Keith's Rally and Naviance, which is our. Post-secondary kind of selection tool, they are now starting to partner more with Clearinghouse where we're going to be able to track. S and C, and then from S and C on, and then also the graduation rate. That's one of the things that we at cabinet and the high school administration level continues to talk about. And it's been unattainable data, they finally have added that extension to that tool. And we, so this, this year will be the first year that we'll start being able to track those students. Um, and again, we thank Casey Bartison for that, to bring that opportunity to us as an administrative change. So yeah, we, we will be able to do, and it'll be great to have.
I, I agree with you, the, the number of kids that we have go to S and C, let's say, you know, right out of high school. Spend only one year in transfer to UCLA, USC, Berkeley, and they're actually done all three years. Right, it's a big number.
Uh, no, but so when those students do choose that path, and they actually go into S and C, then they continue on to a four-year. You don't get that data point, like, it's, it's for our purposes, you know, they, it appears that, that we went to a two-year path, right? And if they did that, you know.
It doesn't count as, for our four-year school data.
Yeah.
But it is why we are wanting to track them now, after they leave us and where they go after S and C. So that even if, it may not help the US going to the retirement, but for us internally and for how we talk about it in the community. But, okay, so yes, maybe this is the case, however, we still had twenty-five percent more kids graduate and get an advanced degree. In four or five years, so it's been a long struggle.
I, I had worked about ten years ago, which, uh, helped me process. Data was very hard to come up with S and C, but what we could find at the time, it was like, they. Um, it was that seventy-five percent of students that were there from C went on to four-year college. After that, it was really hard to think of anything. The, what we also have to look at is how many students are going directly to Florida College and don't stay with. There's any way to track that, that is a reality. We need to be all, you're cheering and pending and all that, but some of them can't hack it, come home, change colleges, you know, get their day back. Um, or, or, because in my son's case, your college is completely bought out by another university, and then get rid of your natives. So, you have a kid, who's all that. Um, anyway, the, thank you for the report, I really appreciate the honesty of the red app. Perhaps that's all the bridge there was most important, so it's, 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 this is what we're supposed to be doing. And hopefully we can find the steps of it, now I'm a little concerned about accessing data and finding it. I don't want to test our kids for data, there's a way for us to leverage, um. The data that we're thinking of into the future, perhaps midterms, finance, and that. And maybe we can find a baseline, give them the information, we don't have a baseline.
It would be, well, the way we designed here, this was meant to be. The, so it's going to be during at the end of the fiveth grading period anyway. So it wouldn't be another way for that thing, and now that we're bringing in a new tool, we're talking about doing it for everything. And thinking about ways, the metrics of progress.
Right.
Not first, most effectively, it's not necessarily a unit test or a mastery test. So how do we incorporate that in grading?
And obviously now, if we, if we're using AI, it can open our, our, it gets two jobs.
Oh, you saw that, it's a.
Okay, so, so. So my other, graduation rate, when do you start flying students? Because it seems to me that at a certain point, there's a point of no return, when it comes to soft money or whatever, does that automatically apply? You know, like you guys, are you aware of that, once they started down that path, right, with, with.
Our counseling team doesn't really, you know, on transfers, some of these, some of the maps that you. For parents and boys and sisters, um, we're starting to have conversations with them every five, two, three years. Which would be the time when you start talking about options, I think, I mean. Either with freshmen, however, we do, are moving into immediate classes, they get a semester of learning, which is, like, new material to us. So I would say we're starting on individual basis, counselors and their kids, as I was just mentioning here. And it really is starting to become like a, a whole counseling and administrative conversation, when you have kids coming into that unit.
So we're, we're, we're monitoring and providing the intervention immediately, so that they're following off, they're getting our data.
Because I wonder if my senior year, we're gonna, I think we said numbers have been down, but hopefully, it's been very.
And you left by the time you. And one other tool that you've added this year, thanks to Dustin, is, um, we have Michelle Dar with the University of Michigan College, another school. Which is helping students that may not have social supports through, I don't know, your family board, but are general of kids that were identified early and very near where they're falling behind. Why do you feel that Dustin, first, she was standing, she's actually coaching and helping create a counter for remediation immediately? But also, how can he push this kid out to get on track? So that's been a big issue.
Uh, thank, thank you very much.
Um, yeah, yeah, I think, um, the people think they're done, they're, I mean, they're basically coming in, you know, they're about to get. Um, lots of, yeah, we've been, we've been, we've been helping, you know. So I'm curious, um, are, I mean, if we're looking forward. I think one job in the survey, the, the teachers and students out, whether they feel today and, and, you know. Um, because in that, we're hoping for us, we're learning, if it's working well, that's all, if it opens up in the, in the, in the, in the.
So, Mary, I can address it, so we are, and it was sharing with our full team. Um, that we're going to be doing kind of a three-sixteen on E D I S, uh, at, uh, the week after next. Where there's going to be, um, a survey that is shared with, uh, students, they'll have their own version of the survey. Parents will get a survey, and then all staff will get a survey, and then we'll get those results.
I think that's great, yeah, and the other thing that, um, since we really have that assignment as well, that's quite a great, to do. Um, and I'm very happy to share about how well, because, 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 we, we usually have, you know, support, I mean, maybe. Do you, do you, do you, do you want to begin, uh, the standard, you know, the, the, or, 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 or? So, with, with that, we need to, 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 we need to.
So I would yield to how, how, um, and. So, from our perspective, um, Norman A is incredibly special. Maybe there's something up there, it, it is both in a very positive place, which is, as well as, like, it. It appears that the students, so I think I would do a great job of, if they're like, have a, well, you know, they will not really. Probably, I think, you know, it's been a lot of work for them, but they're, both, so I would start with that. So I think, so we have a good number, we haven't had a full-time M F T on campus this year. We have a, a machine that is supporting, um, high school students, you know, possibly which fostered here at this office. On whether or not, maybe a full-time M F T in Norman A or on high school campus, I mean, if. If, we had all, you know, if, if these are things that we had money for, like, we would never turn down a transfer. So that I would be able to sort of, our district leadership to decide, part of money, I think she goes. Um, I, I would never say that, that we can fail, we love having, but if we, if we, it's just what happens.
Right, that, that could be beneficial when we have proceeds, and also for, my handful of our, I mean, say, of our.
Can we start going a little bit? That's wrong, I mean, I didn't, I know we don't want to get too far, but, but, um, by saying that, there is one M F T, but it is. That wasn't very in line to the funding, like, so, constantly, you. So if you go into the general education team, who are having crisis, whatever. It would appear that to get a point in time, it may not, people are only because all of these folks were deployed in the naval. Our agents, agents are great, but they require tremendous, that means, who knows, they know their, but, but, you know. And that is a very simple oversight for anyone, as we always said that. There's that older conversation, but it does appear that there is non-M F T, uh, non-internal, uh, in a full, full time capacity.
So I can, I can chime in on that, because that, that is where we've been supporting. Um, we did have an M F T assigned to the high school last year, I split, I split the time between the middle school and the high school. What we found is that the person was not, uh, very busy. So we then reallocated the resources and, and got rid of an outside agency that was, uh, charging us six figures. To provide the support to our C E C classroom that's located on the second floor here. And assign the M F T that we hired to support there, um. Um, if we want to go back and look at the numbers and look at what's happening now, if there's been an increase, that would be my recommendation. However, that was part of the, that was the rationale behind not providing a full time M F T. At a, at a very expensive uh rate per hour uh at for this year. Um, over time, you know, I've had conversations with Ali and over Franks and and my staff has as well. Um, it's, it's a request, it's a desire, but the actual need was not substantiated. And it wasn't, um, it wasn't, it wasn't something that we felt would would be supported, that I could defend to the board for allocating. A very extensive resource, but we want to look at it again, we're happy to do so, but really again, the 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 interns are able to handle. The kind of day to day operations and our M F T is available, like if we have a crisis. Or if we have a specific situation like we did a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, I called them and came here and met with the student. So we we have it in place, but.
For general as well, like.
It's any student, any student, I, and there are no restrictions on how we can use the the M F Ts, but just to allocate, you know. Remember, I came and asked to increase that contract by a significant amount of money. Because we allocated a full time M F T for the middle school, so I'm trying to balance the budget along with the 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 need. So that I can be accountable to the board and the community.
I I really do think that I don't think about it and not. Um, yeah, they're not thinking about that. I think it really is. That in the crisis, they may not be insane in the crisis, so there is not.
Yeah, I don't have, yeah, we have several other divisions as well.
We can look into that.
Yeah, what I would say is I feel very confident that our students. But like I said, if it's in the budget, we would never.
Sally doesn't.
Intern sitting there with them.
Sorry, brings out um, you guys, um, you know, the race, um. I I have had many students, um, you know, coming up to the high school. They know the uh values, the core values from this level, so. Um, it's it's working, um, maybe like communication is getting out there, you know, but um, and then they're ready to adopt that next level. You know, so like they come to our high school, what are your core values, right? So, um, yeah, so it's it's uh, to me, I feel like the education is. At least to the students is is very.
Doctor Brighi said something earlier and I think we need to really, really focus on that conversation as we move forward along with the task force. Um, P B I S and discipline are not the same. And we need to delineate what is P B I S and what is discipline. And I think that will help clear up a lot of the conversations and the misconceptions that we are seeing and hearing and feeling. Uh, across the board uh uh right now, so I think that should be something that we consider and look at going forward.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, so our first goal, uh, would be very ambitious goal was um, to get seventy percent of our students to score a seven or better on. We see our performance class and we have a board spotlight next week on our C P Rs, I'm not going to go too much into it. And we're gonna get all the details and parent pursuits to turn back. Uh, we did not meet this goal this year and you can see the evidence. So we had all four record content areas assessed across the school from each grade level. And we started with, so the the graph that you guys see shows you first, second, third, fourth quarter and uh. At first, when I saw this, I was like, oh, I have to be prepared, but excellent, that did not feel great at all. Uh, but then we kind of reflected and thinking about this goal and what we got out of the staff and the students. Was huge. The fact that we had four content areas speaking the same language, giving a content assessment. Each quarter was amazing. The teachers will read to the group, the school live group, for math. And for English, to the point where like, kids are without lunch, they've got like a pink hoodie on or blue sweats and I'm like, look. Makes a claim today because we highlight our names in pink. And so it's just, you know, the kids have bought in, the staff has bought in, used to this goal. Um, and I know we didn't need it this year, we made huge progress in my shows of our conversations and our P O Cs. And our department needs, and our staff needing, and we know where we need to go next year to get to this goal. And these tweaks for next year, we're merging their labs, working with our teachers on this goal, so we did get it this year, although I feel like. It was successful because we implemented something that's never happened before. And that's huge. And the teacher bought it and there was no confidence. So that was like, I mean. Um, all right, goal two, that's our task force. Again, that one's in progress. We will get our scores this summer. But we have been working towards this goal strategically in various ways throughout the year, uh, I think in the classroom. And with our C P Rs, our C P Rs were kind of a product of how we need to get our teachers to think differently about the direction. And how do we get our students to think differently about learning was thinking in general. And that by itself is going to help increase our task force. In addition to the C P Rs in the instruction room classroom, have embedded lunchtime tutoring. And then Alex for our six, seven tutors with max support. And so you have some chart here that shows some of the data for some of those supports. So the first one that you see is our percentage of Alex. Like they did by grade. Really not as great as I would like it to be, but one of the things about this student plan. That's so embedded in our school, with our teachers, with the students, and even with the parents. That we're talking about this in my. We're talking about these goals and we were talking about the Alex and like how it's going and like. Some parents are saying, oh, my kids can do this. And you know, like, we, we came up with ideas of how. Do Alex better next year and get thirty percent completion rates higher than this year. Uh, some of the other data goes through and um, I have. Very thankfully, an M C X X poster that helped me this year with collecting this data, so we kind of tracked all of our students each quarter. And figure out who's at risk, who we need to monitor, and then we assign these interventions to students and then we track them and this teacher is helping with it. So you have uh data on our lunch tutoring program, on the number of students attending. Then you also have our math and our D L A tutoring attendance data. And uh, what's interesting is you'll see, we can tell the spikes in the data quarterly to either the end of the quarter. Or when there's unit exams in math or English, the students go. Uh, we also have uh data on repeat attendees to our tutorings. Um, and then the kids that we had assigned to, we're trying them, how long are they actually going, not going. So lots of data on the course for the past school. Our career also, uh, we met this one, very exciting, so all of our pathways have uh two or secrets. For our student. And one thing for. For our package, we did something different this year with our incoming graders. We went to the elementary schools, we kind of talked to them about their elective options. Kind of explained the pathways, visited, hyped it up. Then we had our open house invited the students and the parents to have. And then this year, we followed up with a visit to the elementary school and we actually went into every single classroom. And helped block them to choose their electives. They weren't having to do it on their own, at home. Is this the right class? And our counselors all, Mr. Waters went, I went, and we helped them get a lot of the areas. And pick their electives that could ensure students starting a bit, they're picking their electives that they didn't want to do. All pathways was they're making the right choices.
I mean, it was great because knowing actually principal to have the middle school team, including Mr. Waters and Dr. Scott there. Talking to the kids, so the kids are going in, knowing their people. It was amazing.
And it was so cute too, um, that when we came back on the second exhibit, clearly they had like talked with their big grade teachers and their parents. And then it like so many kids had like named their list of their electives and they had them sitting right there on the computer. It was so perfect. So definitely have accomplished that goal. Uh, for our S E L goal, kind of building the relationship with students, we've done a lot of things at U D M S there. And first, you'll most I want to thank the board for a range to think as the whole dog game center. It's been huge, even the temporary locations that we had this year, that's such a tremendous help. The fact that they have the longer space to go to, it means it's made a huge increase in efficiency in the classroom. We can split them now and advocate themselves, just to tie that. Go with that time and then pull back to class. And thank you for that. Sixteen clubs happening on our campus and P T A is supporting. And then we did a survey in October and then we just launched another survey last week, so you don't have all the data back. It's not all the students have taken it, but you can see uh for a hundred percent of students that they have a trusted adult. We had uh right now, it was ninety two percent in the fall and then we're eighty nine percent right now, but we're still waiting for. Numbers to come in and then uh the second part, ninety percent of worse are connected to an extracurricular activity. So ninety six percent of all and then ninety one percent, just pretty amazing that we got my students are connected to something. We were able to, when we check, well, keep the fitness and put it in there, but we have our fitness center now, thank you, Chan, for helping. Um, and we were able to launch after schools. Work that weren't, that's me, show up. And it's some of our our coaches named Sarge are in there at school, like helping the kids and learn how to. Use machines, they have them running up and down the stairs, doing drills. All of these opportunities for it to be connected on campus. And then lastly, communications, I would definitely say we have met this goal, we utilize Parent Square. Our Instagram and we partner with Ray uh for this one and then. It's a constant back and forth conversation, like my newsletter has updated based on that from Aaron. Their newsletter has updated, today now includes a did you know section and that came out of conversations with my pack and some continuing. Uh, my newsletter now gives question that comes to ask students and that came out in our class. The middle schoolers about, so like it's so fast evolution of communication with our parents.
Thank you. Um, I would say I'm being half on the board first, so we want to thank you very much for the information. Our work, our things, and our name of finishes.
I think confirmed as a parent of a fifth grader that there's absolutely a piece. And um, I really do have a good opinion on what my father takes for elective, there's so many amazing electives to take. Um, but it was something that she was governing on her own and she actively had that all the times. Uh, and I took it easy, this is a great variety, there was an art, there was a lot, uh, you know, a little bit of everything and then um. You know, anxiety before heartful, but then I grew up six, uh, you know, they're clear one day in that. Couple of week period where they were coming and going from their campus and it would be clear that they were so empowered. Um, to make their own choices. And I didn't even have the working finger, which is amazing, you know, that they would sit on the platform.
I have a question about the first speaking article, I was curious to know, and I agree, it's super ambitious. Especially coming in off the last couple of years. Um, do you humans permit the seventy percent because our kids were in the sixty percent way the prior year? You know, what was the basis for that to be your goal? So they have never.
They had, so there was no bench dark at all, that was fine.
Because it does seem like they kind of get there a little bit here and there, so let's see the next year. It was learning for students and for teachers and I've done this in previous districts before, I did it with nine secondary schools. And the first thing, but and I didn't. Is I think you have to give them permission for it to be messy the first year and for it not to be perfect. To kind of lower their filter of the pressure of it, so they fully engage. Both students and teachers. And so I told them this, like, it's gonna be messy, like, it's okay, you know, do it perfectly, just do it. Yeah, you want to start somewhere else. And they already know, right? So all of the departments have have done this, you are, they had the ready, they had the follow any trigger. They know their next status and connection.
Um, first of all, I would like to give a comment about the parents in first. And I tell you that is uh maybe doing, I'm sure that we're gonna do more of it next year. Even with the elementary. One in the college university, a genius idea. The only thing that I'm concerned about is the kids get to select. And many of them don't get, I mean, and and that's the thing that disturbs me. They set their mind on doing something and they and and I. I, it bothers me that sometimes even in the second semester where it can shake and it takes them out of their that path. Uh, I don't know what we can do to, but trying, I know it's very difficult, you can't. I think for children, I mean, uh, you go down to fifth grade and. Wow, all these are like a big one and then they have to make a choice, they don't get it. I mean, that, that's when you're capable to begin, then that's something I. That puts a little downer on going into the next grade level, because when they get that, it's not there what they wanted. Unfortunately, I don't know what to do about that, but that would be the only thing then.
Yeah. We asked them to pick their top ten, which out of like the forty five that we have, like narrowing it to ten, it can be hard for them. It it becomes a challenge, it's a balance, because it's a balance between honors and all of the other choices. And when you get to master scheduling, you could make that puzzle piece nothing, a bit of a challenge, so.
Well, you know, a kid loves art or whatever and and I I know we try to increase some of the other classes, like. The orchestra and oral type classes, because they're. They don't, they don't want them, they don't want them. They put them in there. Uh, because.
So you're making a really good point. So Ryan List goes for a case here, this guy literally creates Spanish. Well, he can only teach five periods. One of those periods is ceramics, so he has to have two semesters. Well, he can only carry sixty kids, so. If I would, I trust you, that I won, there's a way, but as a part of an extension, we teach this student, well, they won't want you. And you just, and it's it's too hard for them. So to your point, as partly, and also you're basically at their top one or two choices, but in a school of seven hundred plus. And there's always sixty slots.
You know, something inside with creative. But again, it's not there, I mean, devastating to them. And that's really giving everyone provided for a new school.
Over a three-year period, most kids will get that one thing that you already want to have. Uh, just like as a sixth grader, you're not getting ceramics, because we do ask them to use some preliminary classes and sort of right for that class. But over a three-year period, most kids do get their one.
And one thing about our bell schedule, as much as people make fun of it. Is because of the like rotating kind of bell schedule, unlike most middle schools that don't have that. We get two electives for each student. The other middle schools, the student community gets one. And so, and I don't ever want to get rid of that because they get those two choices every year. So maybe the six electives always been or six. Every year on. Um, electives are a little bad in most schools in place of three. But it's still hard. And then on the parent university, my next one, it's gonna be very spicy. How do you talk about sex with your, with your kids? So that'll be, I think it's like an age, like third. That's the flyer is coming up. You don't have any job though. I, I almost say we're not a science. Thank you, thank you. And so I didn't have to do time because I obviously, you know, it's just too complicated. They're so, they're so. The model that we are and like. Like a capsule, that would be seven, like to be that. No, um, so they're like prom. And they are given their like evidence, so whether it's like the data or the math portion that they have to do or an article they have to read. And then they go clean and then they provide the evidence in the writing that is cited. And then they have to give all the reasons. So like, a math example would be. Um, they hope they say like, how many people can you invite to your birthday party? And they're given a budget and there's the initial theme. They have to give the number and they have to give kind of their evidence, the mathematical evidence. And then they have to give the reason, like, why was that the right way to solve that question? So you might say something like, well, I'm gonna solve it with an equation because that shows the relationship between two variables. The number of people I can invite and the total cost of the party. And they really have to then truly understand the mathematics behind it. Not just a polite equation because it's easy. But why, why was it easy? Uh, and they're short, like they can get them done in one. And, and we just. Yeah, so we did, uh, English, history, math and science.
It's a different prompt for each one.
Yeah.
Topic.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, do that.
That subject, yeah, that subject can trade level. So every student at B M S had four official C E Rs. Science went first. They wanted, they were happy with how their first ones turned out. They did a spring one. History was the same. They did a spring one. And then I had teachers coming to me like separately, like, can we go first next year? So then it became like a fight, like who gets to go first next year? It was a great problem to have, uh, so, yeah. And then we did like silly fun ones, history and science and an extra one. They've done flying.
Yeah, and we can highlight though that the middle school and the elementary schools. Who are laying the foundation of the C E R and now. We've just been talking to talk at the high school, but now that we're getting ninth grade. Um, who have already experienced that, we're now adopting it at the high school as well. So middle school and elementary just do a little lot of amazing, like innovative foundational work and it's. Pivoting up.
And we're gonna have, you guys are gonna have a spotlight next week. That's gonna kind of go over what has been the student samples and student videos.
So, did any of it, you. One per quarter is really great. But you gave more than that?
Yes, so, so before the official required, teachers were expected to do a grading day and expected to enter the scores. For me, it can be the scores. And then science and history gave two additional ones. Um, they wanted to see from fall to spring, how they did. I didn't require them to turn those scores into, you know.
Okay, so it's based on the next year, you, you will be used to like this metric of, of one for one per quarter. Per grade, per subject.
Ideally, the goal would be that we would be seventh every quarter for each student.
It's aggressive. So if you're testing in the first quarter. It's only what they want, like based on that. As opposed to.
So the, the way the C E Rs work is they are more about the skills and the thinking and the reasoning from the students. So it shouldn't matter what the content of the task is. They should be able to get a seven regardless. Sixth graders, you know, because they, we lightly touched on it at the elementary school this year. In two years, it'll be different, but my seventh graders and eighth graders next year, they should be getting seventh for the quarter. In about a whole year of ours.
So you're not basing it on content? So is there a way to also have a metric for content?
That would be more than in a test that our teachers do or like the end of the year.
And you feel as confident with those assessment tools? As, as the high school is saying, they're struggling with their assessment tools. They're, how do you guys swing at those as far as. Really kind of, you know, equity amongst teachers and stuff, is it standard amongst all teachers, are they graded the same? You know what I'm saying? Because I think.
Yeah.
C E Rs are, are terrific and actually bringing, um, uh, real life skills and. But as far as content mastery, how, how do we know what they're here? They're going to the same diagnostic as a high school. We're doing a T K in your fifth grade. Diagnostic, which will be equitable between the two elementary schools. So we'll have those data points.
Okay.
And then six twelve, so we'll actually be able to watch progress from sixth grade all the way to eleventh grade.
Great.
And so that way, what, um, as Marcus was mentioning too. In next year's, uh, reiteration of the strategic plan, we'll have diagnostic data for all those kids. And then we'll watch the progress throughout the whole process. And that's what we realized through this strategic plan that we've worked to do. We love the C E Rs, we're gonna continue that work, but with the W E A and I Ready. We will be able to bring those points to you and be able to have a little bit better conversation, uh, than we are today.
Okay.
Dan, thank you very much.
And during this content, like. Are some people doing good at their content? Where we're at with the middle school, we don't have. Set up for like a true, you know, we need to kind of compare assessments yet because like. Ms. Silver, she's in the honors teacher right now. And so we're looking at kind of shaping that, all right, we would need. Both sixth grade teachers would have regular and honors, so that they could actually, you know, be together. And share assessments and have those conversations about student data right now. She's. Already won.
Yeah, okay. Um, last, last, but and, and then once again, I do appreciate the way that's because it's showing, or you know, you don't. Know if you solve a problem, unless you, then you have a problem. So this is good stuff.
Thank you.
Um, the bulldog wellness center. Are the right students utilizing this thing? We said students are really not in good space, but are we seeing a trend where we think that there are certain students. Who will have issues that benefit from it, that are not volunteering, to take students off, they don't go. Uh, is there a way to coach those students if not?
So we're so fortunate in that grade level counselor, that we have four counselors on our campus. I would say yes, the right students are going. And then the students that when they come to those are global counselor. That is a tool that we, of, of my own teaching at this source. But our health control is also fully open, so they're not comfortable going to a lot of where they come to us. And they can go to their grade level counselor. So there's lots of spaces for them to go to. And we are tracking that data to see the defenders are piloting right now. An electronic smart pass. And it's monitoring bathrooms, it's monitoring bathroom passes, like going to the nurse, front office, the llama center, the.
Okay.
I just, I just quick comment. So like once a month, Rebecca and I go through the overall communication from the district. And what I really want to thank you for, which is just so great that we just saw the cutest video. We had talked before about kind of the students not understanding, you know, how to report things and how to. It was the cutest video and it kind of fits under like S E L and, and also communication. Um, uh, but that was really impressive, you know, and it's told from a perspective of where students can go and report and feel safe. Um, and so my question really about that is like, um, because we were able to see it, how are students able to see that?
The kids came out to them and we literally told them. So we, um, in the data, you have a snapshot of a summary of our admin chats. So we go once a month through P D and the grade level administrators talk in small groups, so they're small. Um, classes and we go like, if there's key things that are happening on our campus, also raise up all the good things that they're doing. But I think for the last six months, we have been talking to them about this QR code and about. How to report that we even use that, we send an email to the office. Uh, and so they, they told it. We had.
Very easy to say it's.
Yeah. Uh, we talked about it at both of our schoolwide assemblies that we've had, the videos sent to them, so.
I, I just encourage like everyone in the room is like, really, you know, it's, it's, you know, one thing to have like video clips. But when you have your own staff and when we get to see you. And like, that's really appealing because as you mentioned, going to the fifth grade. Classroom and talk with like, and then they see you again. Like they see you, they kind of in this video and it's like the, you're the people they see every day. So I just want to thank you for that. That was very effective and really responsive because it's something we asked you guys to do is to make sure. Kids have to have, to understand, you know, where they can go and report things are happening.
I had four of our students in the night later now.
Wow, it's so great.
She did a great job.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think a follow up question on the C E Rs, you know, something from how we. Um, is there an assumption that the C E R and it has, but there is a synergy between them? Yeah, and I think, um. I haven't finalized my dissertation for next week. I can include some of the research behind this, because it will help one another. And there's, um, a lot of data out there in terms of how it helps with like S H Ts, A C Ts and those sorts of tests, so they're.
Thank you very much. Okay, teachers, always, everyone push your chairs back, please, move your chairs back. Move your chairs back. Move your chairs back. We're gonna play an activity to get your blood moving. Please stand up if you have a dog. Thank you.
Stand up if you have a dog.
Yes. Thank you, sit down. Please stand up if you have children. Thank you, sit down. Mary, give us one, please stand up, kid. Oh, it's late night. Interesting. All right, I have a deep and small forest man.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amber.
If you don't talk louder out, that's a great comment.
And next to us will be someone else soon, we hope. Everyone's fingers dropped. Okay, Miss Mayberry and I will be.
Thank you. I just want to say for a second, but we have such an incredible team of people that we're working with. And we also want to. Miss Mayberry should probably get up here also.
Yep.
That coordinator of our, I think, and really, I, we've really been working together. There was. And we've been working really hard with, um, Mayberry, like talking about with Ed resources, like just being one of the principles. We've spent a lot of time together to see if some of our Sunday activities, like before, uh, yesterday our art show together. Tomorrow we have an honors fire, so we're really excited about our time.
And we are presenting together today because we are a unified team and a unified school. So we are Beverly Hills Elementary Schools. All right, our first goal was E L A math task. It's a two-part goal, super important because they're a little bit different. So students will make at least one year's growth in one year's time. And I love that you pointed out. It's a little bit vague how you measure that. And it goes back to what we've been talking about in terms of looking at the N W E A. But also looking at I Ready, which is a secondary program. So our leadership teams at both schools have gotten together under the leadership, thank you again, Miss Mayberry. To look at those two programs to figure out what's going to give us the information we get now. Short version, star, what we get now gives us a reading level. Which is nice to know. It doesn't tell me if they can decode multi-syllabic words. It doesn't give me those discrete skills. It tells us reading. So we're looking now at something that is going to give us that disaggregated detailed information of those discrete growth.
So I'm just gonna keep going on. So, uh, in terms of our start and task force, we know that that's all we really want to do it from the first degree plan. But at this point, we don't have any data to give you. Our kid are currently taking the task, they're working on it out of today, so we're in progress with that. Um, the one year's growth in one year's time, specifically Mrs. Marcus to answer some of your questions. We have a bunch of, um, low growth, high achieving learners, right? So we have really high kids that come in high and they say hi. And so what this has done in the last two years in both of our strategic plans is move our conversation from achievement to growth. Like what are we doing? Like what's the purpose of our education around, are we just letting our high kids be high? Or are we helping them to actually grow even though they're high? And so even though we don't have great, um, data from task or what Mr. Bobby was saying, our star acceptance are amazing. We've had different grade levels work on different forms of evidence on the engineering data chats. Um, we pulled data chats several times recently, or they're different at the two sites, but we get, we both pulled data chats to talk about what's your evidence? From first grade that your students are making that one year's growth. What we're looking for is something that can be universal, that first grade could understand what fourth grade is doing. And fourth grade could understand where second grade is doing it. And we don't have that at the current time. What we also have is like a real shift in conversation around our lowest students and our students that are struggling academically, like on the other end. Would they need to make more than one growth, one year's growth in one year's time, right? They're not at grade levels to make some grade levels years of growth. And so we spent some of our time celebrating those wins of a year's growth, a year's time, even when they're not at grade level. And they deserve a lot of celebration for all of the work that they're putting in. They even are making a year and a half of growth. Maybe still not be at grade level or hit grade level standards, but we really also want to spend some time talking to hope. Teachers, parents and even parents about how hard those teams are working. So while it's in progress, it's made a huge difference in what we're working on in our school.
And tapping that, also, we're lucky here in Beverly Hills. Our English learners, our E L Ls. Our English learners are very different than statewide English learners. We have English learners who are often educated, fluent in what's called L one, their first language. If a student comes to us educated in their L one, it's more likely that they're gonna make huge growth when learning English. We have the benefit of many students who already have an L one, an L two and an L three. So we have many students who speak three different languages. Which is why our E L scores are actually significantly higher than when compared to state. So we do keep a close eye on them. We monitor them throughout the year. And that's one thing that we've noticed is our E Ls grow faster than statewide.
Yes. Okay, so career day is the only place where we differ. Um, we definitely had a career day with twenty speakers and Mayor Bossy did a little introduction for us and we're very excited about that. We had a little bit of feedback on upstairs that like, are we did a survey of what our kids love. Um, they said things like they were shocked that you can make a living off of making sounds on a radio. That it took a month to take a test to become a lawyer. They were very impressed with all of those little pieces. Um, but they want to hear from Swimmer next year. They want to hear from veterinarians and they'd like to hear from Spie. I just need to give a huge shout out to our family who made it happen. Uh, they heard it happened and dealt with all of the crazy things as. People who have careers, real careers know that they had canceled by the last minute. So we would have had even more speakers, but we had a ton of cancellations.
And on that note, the reason we differ, at the beginning of here, we have lofty goals. When we put our plan together, we had lofty goals of doing a combined. Career day over at Hawthorne with both schools together. Timing got away from us. It didn't work out. Again, thank you to Dr. Kim because she shared the information from their career day with us. It fell at a time where we were bringing on a new administrator. It fell at a time where we were bringing on a new administrator and now we're transitioning out an administrator. So we're considering trying to get that done at the end of May, but between task testing finishing. And fifth grade activities starting, we're pressed for time. So for now, we're saying we did not meet this goal. I would like to say from progress, I don't want to make a commitment if we can't follow you. Okay, increased eight class offerings. Got it, thank you. Eight class offerings, we increased at both schools by one, so we did meet that goal. We increased. Perhaps later we can add more, but for right now, our classes are full. Do you want anything else? Okay, good. Eight certification of all fourth and fifth grade teachers. Again, beginning of the year, we have lofty goals. We would love to see all of our fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade teachers certified with gifted and talented students. The more we look into that. It's a lot more time to be officially certified. It's a lot more time consuming and a lot more expensive. So teachers would actually have to take classes, much like our T K teachers are working on those classes right now. So it's a huge commitment that we couldn't force on anyone. So we're considering, always looking ahead to next year, we're considering changing this goal to working more on. Working with teachers on differentiation. So that all T K through fifth grade teachers get differentiation training. And if you have questions about differentiation, that's both of our passions. We do go on for days. So right now, we did not meet that goal. We're gonna tweak it next year and hopefully differ.
And I'm gonna address that E L goal. Um but at the beginning of the year, we gave a survey around um connectedness to the campus. How do you trust to do that was one of the questions that we highlighted. Um and I want to think it's in progress because we gave the survey again, but as we approached testing, not all of our classes got an opportunity to fill in the survey. So as it is right now in the fall, we were looking at about twenty-five students total on both campuses. That's over almost five hundred students, um that said they did not have an adult. Uh so it's a pretty good number, and we're looking at our incoming numbers for April, look like they're even better with a lower percentage of that. But we didn't want to get in fall data. We didn't have as many people that we, as many students that filled out the um survey at this point in the year. So that's what we put in progress. Um we're working closer to that. And then the final one is our social emotional learning would be universal counselors. And we're really happy to say that Ms. Fernando and Mr. Well have been in every single classroom all year long. They know everything. They really are spending time with our students in new classes, um that they are making connections over and over again. And I know that you asked about a critical structure statement. Um we feel really confident that even though they might not have the best skills. They'll know how to lead someone who's coming in to connect um with many students that might have. And we have smaller places that happen at home for some little kids, you know, divorced families. Siblings, a lot of grandparents that happen to me regularly.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um once again. I apologize about it, but I think. There's an ax up there that I just, I don't believe in as an administrator for the sense that they're being asked, but the gate forfeit then train. Really, it was an injustice. So initially when we went into this, we thought that would be a great way to educate some of our teachers. But during our conversations around math, you know, Maggie, uh Dr. Sherman, our principal of A Ps worked really hard on creating our math leadership team. So instead of going down the route of the differentiation around the gates process, they actually adjusted and moved towards the math leadership process. And started working with partners in practice and stuff. So it really should be, it should be complete, which you'll see on my training piece. It was an adjust, and that's exactly because you said learning, and that's why I wanted to just throw that out there. They did a ton of training with their teachers around specifically differentiating around math. And not necessarily differentiating across the, you did tap one, it just. Anyone else? I appreciate you just bringing up the math leadership. That's been huge.
The other thing I'd say is that um the Hawthorne Gala this year was. So well attended, I feel positive. That practice environment from all the parents and and everyone.
First of all, of course, the co-sharing was the first thing I made a comment about. And I, uh for that, I would love to see, and I know how much you do already, but like when you have a carnival. If it's probably in most schools for a tenant, I think that will bring a lot. So I, I know that each of you have a carnival, but I would love to see it to be something that would be all together and then.
Forestman carnival that's coming.
And I, I, I really, that was one of my first things. I wanted a question about the the T K effect for the students who come into the dark. Share a little bit about, because I really, you know, that we're spending that, we don't get refunded by the state or anything like that. And I'd like, I mean, that must be such a pleasure for the kindergarten teachers to get kids that come in. In prep, to get prepped socially, sometimes a little bit academically. And I, I really think that, and eventually it's gonna be like full grown, full years thing. So I, I just wanted to make a mention of that and 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 that is where we are going to get our growth in students. We're not gonna get it by all the kids coming in high school, so we're getting it coming from the fact that we need more T K classes. And I think that that's where we're gonna start to see our role and goal, and then moving up to the scale. So I think this is gonna be a tremendous thing and get ready for it. Um I, I have a suggestion. I don't know whether you were talking about where you could do a career day. You know, the last couple of days of school, it's sort of like, I used to find it like you were emptying. Where you could have something like that, and you know, if the teachers are busy, but having someone come in and do a career might be somewhere you would.
We may be able to do something. We have huge plans. We may be able to do something that is huge.
That was just a thought that I had.
Yeah.
And I love the fact that you are looking for some way that, because I said before, how do you measure one year's growth in one year's time? Where does it get start? Where does it begin? What are you using? You measure first and 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 so on. That you're looking for something that can really identify that, but I give you full credit. You can find somebody to find something that can actually do that accurately, because I think that's a real challenge. So uh and again.
We're up to the challenge.
And 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 again.
Absolutely.
So I wanted to, the way that I'm doing is that, you know. Now, a lot of candidates. Navigating the, 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 or better completely.
Well, one of, one of the things that we noted is that in the learning in a classroom, they um they can, they have all the right answers. And um when you're with, when you write, you have, they have all the right answers when they're in like a community group or a group session with our counselor. They know exactly what to say. They can pro model that. And then on the playground, they forget. One of the critical themes is training our playground staff. That's been a real goal for us. Um in those same, that same language that we use, um for us, it's really helpful that Mr. Well is on the playground. That makes a huge amount of difference. We come seeing in real time all the time and saying, you know how to answer this. We practiced the class, whether our words that we're using. And e-models then for um our playground staff right there. If you're in top and on our yard also, that also makes a huge difference. Um just in the watching of what's happening. And a lot of our bullying, our biggest thing for bullying happening at home. Yeah, that's the most that we're dealing with. Most of it, the general phones are not being, people are not being. We want, we don't want to see them gate to gate. And you're, and you're having with that.
We don't have a problem. An elementary school with phones at school.
It's not an issue because we're simply not.
Right.
Yeah, they're not doing it at school. Um and sometimes there's, there's some behavior things of bothering each other, and we're dealing with them. There has, they come up over, you know, the regular. But um the things that were most obvious are happening at home. Plus, and we're finding groups of parents over and.
Phones or devices.
Over, yeah. And some of them that were being, um you know, not uh designated for education. Parents or or kids are getting out, and I know the whole issue that does. The most often thing that he's seen in the bullying for elementary school social explosion. Most often, that's the thing, and it's hard to explain that he can't leave a kid out of the group chat. And it's not okay to him, that person on the chat, but that's a form of bullying. And that's hard, even for adults to really understand. Um but like, well, I'm allowed to be friends, but I want to be friends with. But um any sort of scenario, it's.
Those are conversations that have changed our world. Because we're having to have those conversations that aren't necessarily in the standards that we have to teach. So we're addressing those things, but it's a good point that it's mostly bullying is happening at home on devices. Not saying that it doesn't happen.
So can I, can I, can I chime in a little bit?
I would love it.
Yeah, so kudos to the whole district, but particularly our elementary schools. Our data in area shows, when we're looking like in the pre-interventions, uh the, the non-sustentable offenses. Where we are required by law to have, use other means of correction. Strong, strong data showing that these things are happening and it's having an effect on the behavior on the campus. So that's what, that's what Craig and Sarah are saying, but as I go through areas and look at the data every month, I'm seeing, oh, okay, this student did, X student did this. Instead of suspension, they were counseled or they were, had to do a restorative justice circle, or they had to have a meeting with their friend. They had to write an apology letter, whatever is appropriate. For the student, for the offense, and those, those interventions are also in there being tracked and being utilized. And that's why we're having, we're seeing the change, and that's why the things are happening in other areas. Now, I'm not saying we never have an incident, but the way that we're responding to it and we are re-teaching the desired behaviors is having a positive effect.
That's the most important thing. We're talking about four to ten year olds.
Yep.
They make mistakes.
Yep.
It's our job as the adults to teach them a learning opportunity from that mistake.
And I would say that if it's happening on a playground, it's like, if there's playground, it could be most often what's made in social explosion. Or there's some physicality that's happening.
Yes.
That they're like learning how to like be with each other. There's like roughhousing. Um not in a bullying sense, but that's like all often what we're dealing with is like, where did your body stop and is that other person's body begin?
Depending on the course, between twenty and twenty-five.
Class or what?
In each, in each course.
In each course, okay.
And we launched two new classes, Spanish and instrumental music.
For differentiating instruction, um in talking about additional training, are you also looking to fit into the mind?
And and those who are, those who are identified as eight are not always the highest.
Exactly.
So. I'm gonna stand on my soapbox right now.
So so for the different kid instruction, can you locate part of it?
We're talking differentiation. That means fifth grade, a kid who's reading at a kinder level and a kid reading at a twelfth grade level. We're gonna address everyone right where they are.
Uh thank you very much.
And so um our amazing team at Hawthorne Board, starting with the creating of plan, free to train. Oh, I've got you. We're basically coordinator of all the education, helping with this. But we've met all four goals that we initially set in the creation of a plan, and this is held within the evidence that we provided to you. And with both our facilities, our instruction and our staffing potentials in, in, we've been studying that. I'm saying the word potential a lot, because there's a lot of where are we gonna go with these next steps and things to work on that with all of you. In here, the instructional part is so awesome that we've actually met this already with your work that you've done as a board and education. And as the district prior to even my arrival of opening up TK to all four-year-olds in the entire community of Beverly Hills Unified. This is something that has accelerated in working only district in almost all of Southern California that's actually been performed on this. Our amazing primary teachers, we have ten enrolled in an early childhood education credentialing course. And an administrator involved that we've supported for awesome, you know, with co-writing grants with other districts to provide this opportunity. So our staffing is ready to go for these, for these little, um little learnings that we're gonna be having, and we do have. Um and only going to grow our enrollment throughout for that. And then lastly, we're really prepping to work with you in an individualized study session to talk about, you know, what are our next steps gonna be? Here are our three plans. Let's get a little bit deeper um in our understanding of what this is gonna look like and which plan should we eventually go with. And so you're gonna be hearing from the services team, Mr. Seaman and I, soon about those next steps. TK and preschool. So the plan of that preschool option. And so when you look at the three different potential plans, um we talked about that, it's maybe not called, because they're considered our earliest under the twelve right now. What would it look like if we done the added, the preschooled and what? Right, and it would be. And that's what I, that's what I'm like.
Yeah, and we were gonna do like a separate, a deeper dive into that plan and um, you know, timing of those sessions, so.
I really appreciate the work that you're doing. We really wanted that. I mean, we certainly had made, I think, where it's in the reporting. For people who need. There are opportunities with two-year-olds that are about. And the only reason I bring it up is because a lot of the simple, you know, C four, um, they can't do the whole of it too. And I know that that is a story, you know, then, you know, they have to be taken care of in different ways, that's why it's just not a primary training. Um but now that we have our, our C K program, maybe it will help us through the loss of families earlier. Um families, we, uh, they're being two, they're working, uh, so forth, and then we. Um families, meaning they're two, they're working, and so forth, and then we can take more of them in our.
And that feedback will be so great for us to help even build our plan even further, um just law-wise and code-wise, that our two-year-olds are are not really in code. Right. Quite yet, they follow like data here type regulations, and so that'll be a path that will up their research even like a a different way about them, potentially have that. So I think what we're trying to go towards hoping is small, like let's go through my four-four-year-olds, let's go through three-year-olds and then five-year-olds. Potential, though, maybe we add two-year-olds or a couple years.
Yeah. We from that. Generally, we can get families in to our program in. Um then the interview that they think was starting to happen, and also activities, and we do gather, and like, they are focused, but um. But I definitely wish that powers us, take your preschool, and how you um continue to take that. And I think that that is, I think we want, I think that the need that we know, even in the city without. So it's from maybe getting given into time um under, in minutes of danger.
That's, and so if you look at the plan, there's that option as well, is, you know, where it would be the cost effect, you know, of having them stay in. I think for our study session, we'll dig deep into those conversations.
No, I have a comment. I I'm not sure if this falls in this one or not, but I think it's all within the TK. Uh first of all, this, of course, it all depends on the funding and who's gonna do it, because at the expense of what we have already in our regular program and our general fund and so on. I don't know what this would be an option for us, but we don't get partnered with the city, because we need that, otherwise. Right now, we're doing TK without the help of the state. Um so I see this as a great plan for them, and the only thing that I would caution is that what I'm hearing, and this didn't affect this plan as well as the other. Because so many of our kids in TK go to school for nine to twelve, or nine to one and two, and the parents are clamoring for something that will give them the option to do it there. And right now, we have this one program that takes fifteen kids, and they're really, their parents are really worried about, well. This is not an advantage for me, because I have to come and pick them up and so on and so forth. And this is the issue that I think we're facing. And if we were facing with this, as well as thinking that we need to really think about the plan and what it's gonna offer to the parents. They are looking for something almost like in a full day here, and 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 this is, I don't know what you're thinking, but.
Well, we're actually looking at that right now. So not only are we spending time doing some forward planning about like what this could be. We're also being responsive to what we're doing now, how we're letting students are now. And so we're looking at um looking with our with our elementary schools at the the timing of when programs start, when are they released? And when our classroom is going to be available to the JPA. So we're actually working on that right now, we had a conversation this morning.
Yeah, okay, I did a little of that, something that I've been looking at.
Definitely, you're right.
I mean, I didn't, we're really talking about early education and that, right? So it's from where the way we're situated right now, we pay at all of our schools. And students that get out, um when they get out of the TK, when they end, including our students that are in elementary, when they end. What type of programming are we offering, either through the city but at our site?
Yep.
Um that makes it certainly sound easy, though, that, because right now, we get a lot of feedback that there's a lot of needs, that something that comes as. Be an office full of hair, uh which is, they call it office full daycare, and as well as. And then as we look at early education, uh even if it's uh preschool and daycare. Um and the city partners with us, and we are providing staffing, but there's the pain of the staffing, I didn't know. So my union said, but I'm not sure if I, the logistics of that, so without really looking at the logistics of it, knowing that we have a little bit of that. From uh facilities and from uh staff and people, like, um. You know, in my mind, would be ideal is that we're offering a program that that we're doing the funding to the cities. Um and their paid programs for preschool and daycare and daycare is offered, we can be, in many ways, I would. Feel like at some point, we have to ask for a feedback from the community of what these needs are, and how many people we need to do. And would we invite only for preschool and daycare, would we only invite our middle residents, or would we give them priority in the public that, you know? Which is really, even though we're not beyond what is demanding, and that may also attract them, you know, they're. You know, from a longer term, but I know, I think specifically what I do have to consider is what are the, what is that? So what, you know, depending on where the facility is and what programs we run through that are, we have different um. That logistics that we have to contend with, um depending on the purpose. So when TK through. Uh T those that are existing on my school, when you go Hawthorne, you had daycare and preschool, that could be a different set of um. Parameters that we have to use, some of this funding, some like, if they run to the city, that is that like.
Right, right. And we, yeah, it it definitely does. And those are, e- even with what the need is right now, we're having those conversations about. You know, how can we shift what we're doing so that there aren't gaps in time? And um and there's a lot of opportunity to, if we, they create new programming after school, even for our own staff. Do kind of our HR departments working together to see if there is somebody that wants to stay on after school, and you know, we pay for the city, and then there's some consistency in staff.
I mean, it's a lot of coordination, I think, for the city, but I think if it's coordinated with the city, we can optimize our power and their resources. So we have the people that we choose, we have to down through, and we're able to uh leave the names, but also.
Yeah, and we've started those conversations already, uh especially just being responsive to uh some of the needs that we're hearing about now.
But don't we currently have um preschool that's run by the city that is on, right, in our campuses? I mean, we use, things are, so that is.
Yes, it's just, there's some gaps in time as far as, you know, when programming is starting. And so based on, you know, the length of our school day and when, you know, we still have staff that are in classrooms. Um and it's not yet kind of that JPA time. So it's just, it's really just readjusting, but it it goes back to what is the, what is the demand, you know, first of all, like what is the need? Um and then what can we do? Um and it's in the best interest of our students to have a have a full day. Um because there are a lot of working families that need that support, and um you know, there are some things that we can do on our end to tighten up our.
Right, we know the immediate means, like, how to provide more programming. At at the place, generally, the.
Right.
Um and then these are what we have. And then the future, that's. Is that for a while, students are maybe preschool daycare in a, certainly in case center, that we thought, or in which it's in the sacred areas of the park, and I think. A lot of people would really appreciate having it, and security for the people, and people with centralized, but really coming home from the family, right? Obviously, we provide programs for parents and housework, and mommy and me, and lots of other programs.
No doubt.
Was it a two-year-old or a four-year-old, even with um seemingly over the lock, because sometimes it's a lot of so. I would be the man who's definitely there, so, oh, yeah, matter of how much.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna look forward to this coming back. Discussion.
Renee Dever, Dr. Orabat.
Hey, how are you?
Hi.
We're Brent and Marco, board members, are you going up? Um I, pleasure of working with Dustin Seaman on these certificate classified classified employee plans. Um sorry, all that, that's. Certificateed classified employee plan. Um you'll notice that my areas are in progress, these are big, are are yeses, of course. Uh.
Hey, Dustin. Uh the work that we do in personnel services, obviously, we work in conjunction with the these sites more than anyone, but also in all of our departments. Uh we put the goal areas in three buckets, hiring, training, and retaining. Uh the work that we do, I'm gonna talk quickly about hiring. Um one of the goals was to streamline the recruiting, hiring, onboarding process, as well as utilizing time management system. We put in progress here because unfortunately, we are, as you know, many of you do know, that we're switching over to the Lanco Best Advantage System. So we are tied to them as far as onboarding, we are, uh our staff, between the business staff and my personnel services staff, go through. Four hours of training, two days a week, so eight hours of training each week to make this transition. We plan on making the transition this summer. Um so once we get to that point, then our onboarding systems will frontline, we can kind of put them all in motion, which is really good, but. The infrastructure is there, the training is there, and obviously the support will be there, so we feel really, really good about those areas. Uh Dustin.
The training piece, um ultimately, the evidence that you guys have in front of you, you'll see that did meet all of our goals for this section. One of the first ones was the national board certification process. We had our first cohort graduate, which you guys saw, so there was seven graduates. We have eight currently in our cohort two, and we just recruited for a start of a cohort three. We have one person, um but we are still in that active recruiting phase because of the initial communication out. So um we're excited that we'll have another graduating class of eight or eight to the next strategic plan. Um the second one is coaching cycles with instructional coaches. Um you'll see, uh and that's not really a heated point in the sense that our district-level instructional coach, Dr. Michael Sherman. Does instructional coaching with all of our helping teachers, action program teachers, which are the second data piece, which is all our teachers that are in year one. In the program and in year two, which graduates. So in year one, we have five brand-new teachers who are in the district, and he directly helps supervise. In the sense that he is helping them write their evaluative goal, he goes in and helps videotape lessons, and gives them feedback directly on their instruction. And then also directly supports then the year twos, who then will graduate and clear their teaching credential. So we'll have four graduate on day seventeen, so that's super exciting. Another goal that we had was our new teacher orientation, we wanted to blow it up. So we wrote this goal in July at our leadership conference, we did blow up our new teacher orientation, created in two-day process. So you can see the agenda for both, and we've already from that have started to work in that services, I'm blowing it up even further. Um and making it even more specific around things like. Um assisting our brand-new district with writing communication to our parents on day one. Again, kind of tying in parent engagement into just the orientation to our district. So longer the days of new teachers coming onto our campuses, just sitting and getting and listening to me, like, here's how we grade. It's more about like actionable items of like, what does that first week of school look like? So we know that they are ready and set to go on day one. Um uh professional learning communities that you already heard, uh it was mentioned actually twice, Dr. Scott said it in her uh update. And um this keeper also has been heard, uh just almost every Wednesday morning that is really around what we're talking about is creating these professional learning communities first. Just to not only talk within their grade level, within their departments, across grade levels, um and across the district. Around sharing data that's gonna help them make decisions. In addition to, uh we are actually bringing a whole team in the fall, uh we're able to, Pasadena is hosting a national conference. So it's local and it's right down the street, uh where we'll all be able to attend. And again, continue to move that common language that we use towards helping our teachers, developing our instructional strategies. And rather than not least, our national math conference and training, that was such a small goal, we thought it was such a huge goal at the start of the year, and we blew that out of the water. From creating the math, um the math leadership team to offering preventative development outside of the school day, we redeveloped the way that we're delivering that. It's no longer, again, a sit and get during the day, we're offering things after school, we're offering things on non uh student attendance days. Uh and you'll see also in your evidence, all of those uh teachers that not only attended the national, but also went to a Stanford Institute as well. And the last that I really wanna highlight, and Dr. Sherman, our uh district instructional coach, um also just got accepted, which is great news. To actually present at the National Math Teaching Conference for this fall. So what awesome for us as a district in Dora, I knew that not only have we had people attend, now we're actually having one of our own uh employees go and present. At that national conference. So um I I will just uh piggyback on what Dustin said, just to praise his team, uh between him, this may vary, Dr. Sherman. Is you can notice in the three years I've been here, there's a buzz as far as PE is going. On that, I mean, you see something happening all the time here on on our campus, which is really cool to see. A lot of times I'm up here, just for me, it's an opportunity to come up and see people. They're inspired, they're doing great work, and that's a really good thing, so thanks for your team, Dustin, on that piece. Uh the last thing is retaining, and this is a little bit of a stretch, but this is something that uh we talked about when we were formalizing these schools, the board made a point to talk about. We, there was an idea of this this formal complaints, and if you recall, last year, we had this run on uniform complaints, we had a bunch of complaints happening. So as one of the areas that we wanted to focus on, because my area handled, was handling a lot of those, was to resolving complaints. And we like to resolve those at the lowest level. So this year, we're proud to announce that we have zero uniform complaints, doesn't mean we don't have complaints, complaints still happen. However, we resolve them at the lowest levels, which is where they need to be. Teacher, you know, with parent, student with with teacher sometimes, and so on and so forth. So I'm proud to say that sites are handling these things. Our job is to help facilitate, help them understand process, but their job is to resolve them, and they are. So thank you to all the sites who are doing that, um we're resolving conflicts, which is really, really nice. Um and then finally, the bar participation peer assistance review. This is part of one growth and development strategy when student or when teachers are not cutting it. Then we have the evaluative process to go through, and then if they get a needs to improve, then they will be uh. Put into the PAR program, and I will tell you, we have a very, very high-functioning PAR program. Um I never said, never happy to say that the PAR program will get rid of people, our program, our PAR program. Does, and that's a good thing, because it's a very, very high-functioning, and they want people to grow and develop. But they also know that it's time to hold people accountable when we need to. Um we do have one participant next year, which is part of the in-progress. We also, I know, be strong part from the board is of education is to improve our evaluation process. Dustin and his team, as well as our team, working together, um along with the bargaining team, have a committee that is working on. Uh looking at a new evaluation system, we have agreement to this point in time, again, I can't speak about it too much, because it is part of the bargaining process. However, we do have an agreement on the tool that we'd like to use. So what we will then start doing is getting back to the bargaining table to talk about what that pilot process and transition process will look like. To getting to a new tool. So for all of us, it's a good opportunity to kind of reset. Put a very good emphasis on our evaluation system, really to pare it down. We have, if you look at our our evaluation system, we have four different types of them. We have good agreement in the in in at the table at this point in time, that says, let's pare this thing down. And make sure that it's, we're all using one instrument, and that makes it streamlined and much easier for everybody to kind of really focus and focus on uh growth and development, our teaching.
and focus on, uh, growth and development of our teaching.
And the important piece behind this too is, um, in our previous, uh, evaluation tool, it was, it was locally created. And these are nationally norm and data driven, and so research based. And so we only invited those types of teacher evaluation tools from Marzano to Danielson. And so it's great that we all agree administrative and union so far, so that's more P D on the other end, which is exciting. Our growth is what you'll see from our goals next year is really about implementing that tool. Yeah. Implementing, enhancing, training, sporting, and making sure that when we roll it out completely, people are ready to use it and use it effectively.
That's a way to put it down. I know, I should say, and it's, and it's really great to hear that you're putting people on the ground now, but it's been a grand journey for so long, and it's positive for the government, and it's been that it's implemented by the beginning of the year.
Yeah, so what is, so as far as implementation, we'll really have to come to an agreement on what that timeline looks like. That's part of the bargaining process. However, we will really push to do it with fidelity. Typically, what happens in, um, the evaluation that rolled about different districts is you'll have a year that you'll have a pilot year where people go through, they learn the systems, we learn the tools, and then for states, the following year. But again, that's an agreement we'll have to make with. Um. And, and given my team, we have a contract that has, uh, one more year, so this might line up in a way that this is all contractual. Yeah.
With the open ended though, when I renegotiated with the C D A, when I was president, probably the open ended item. But that finally, hopefully, we can get situated and get it in play. At this point, we've been wand- wandering.
Yeah, and the good thing is, though, you have to remember is that we're using our current evaluative tools to evaluate our current, uh, staff and employees. And it's not that we're have lack of.
Oh, I know that, but it's, is it effective? That was another question.
As effective as we want to be, sir.
Looking forward to that, board members.
Any other questions, um?
Thank you. I have a question on the training. Um, I know it's specifically in classified, but, uh, for, for example, Y R A's and I A's and so on. Um, do we have any, no, a hope to them, also welcome them to our district and also equip them with more tools and resources? And is that something that we can consider, as opposed to closing the loop on everybody having?
We do, one of the things that when we reopen bargaining, one of the things that, uh, I won't spoil it, but one of the things that we'll want to do is our I A's have a less calendar than, than the rest of our employees. So we've been paying them out of Laura's budget to include them in additional days on the front end. So one of the things that we want to look at in bargaining is to bring them up to the same amount of days. That way, we don't have to, we just know we will have them, so we can train them, onboard them. The other piece.
Can I, can I piggyback on that, Stu? When we hire new I A's, we do, my department onboards them. We do a, a full training. We have a I A handbook that they receive, and we go through it with them and, and give them that. Additionally, they're, they're trained in the, the C P I, uh, training every year or, or the refresher every other year. And that's for crisis management, when, when students escalate and possibly you have to restrain them or do things like that, they receive that training as well.
The other piece is substitutes.
Substitutes, Y R A.
Yes.
Um, along the same line with that, my next, next move in the work area is are you completing the position that they did with the, that they need to have? Um, for the first year, then for the second. Yeah.
Really, so I started the certificate with sites of the teachers, and they really see that. So, and you can see on our needs board, we did, um, Mark was one of the guest speakers or keynote speakers, uh, on the board orientation. And then again, throughout just kind of scout meetings, um, and I believe that there is scout within, um, Laura's, uh, instructional assistance onboarding process for that safety and security, it seems well.
And part of that video, that handbook is if I am just coming on and I know nothing, if I open that, I have direction. Right, I can look at that and say, okay, this is what I need to do on the deal, for everybody to know.
And, and what, uh, Matt was alluding to as well is by increasing the instructional assistant contract, it then allows them to extend things like our, our, uh, February seventeenth Professional Development Day, where we hosted a mini conference here with over fifty different speakers, but it wasn't part of their actual.
Contracted work.
Yeah, their contract. And so we missed out on the opportunity to have them in there, listening to what the teachers are hearing, but they're there to support the group, right? And so that would be part of the education process, because we can get them there, then it would be even more about, you know, supporting not just the safety and security or, you know, not aggressive behavior, but also instructional practices.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have one, um, colleagues, we didn't have time. We have a few more down here. I'm going to go through them, please. Dr. President, we'll get you all of them, um, because I might have to call quick to go. People back up the question we answered.
Thank you.
All right, great, thanks, folks. So right, uh, I wanna start by thanking sites. Um, we did a lot of work on, uh, our thinking initiative this year, and they were wonderfully responsive, especially the A Ps at each site that I've been working with. Thanks for that, again. I'm Mark B. I am the executive director of School Taking, and I'm excited to be here. So right away, when I, um, took on this role in July, I started talking about emergency prepared classroom supplies, uh, for emergencies, and I worked with the sites on that. And in a lot of ways, that was easy, although we did rethink how we wanted to deploy so many things, did some innovations, um. So, and then we ordered them. But when they came in, the interesting part was working with the sites and the pack on the comprehensive, uh, safe school plan. That turned out to be, you know, quite a bit more work. We reviewed it in a new way, so that could be easier long term, but short term, it's a little bit tricky. Um, so along the way, we were just talking about new emergency supplies to go with the state in, and making sure that the sites knew about them and the differences in how to deploy it in an emergency. Made sure our comprehensive safe school plans, um, kind of reflected all of that. And along the process, we heard from several sites, yeah, the comprehensive safe school plan is great, it's a hundred and fifty pages, can we boil it down? And so one of the things we did, it actually took a month or two to get, um, kind of a consensus and a clarity from every site, every pack, and the account for school safety. We actually created this, um, emergency procedures guidebook that is in every classroom now. And what was really cool is, like, it, it looked simple, and it took quite a lot of work and buy-in. So thanks to the sites for putting it through with our union leaders and other leaders, and mostly, if not universally, we've heard nothing great things about it. People just said, like, it's so much easier. So this comprehensive safe school plan is really, really important, um, but boiling it down, making it easy, especially in emergency, was just kind of a fun innovation we didn't see coming. Um, thanks to Dr. Brady for pointing us in that direction. I think it really worked out. So you can do, um, an easy hard guess on that, uh, feel good about that. Um, feel good about all of it, to be honest. Um, the monthly drills, we are, every school is on pace to make it. If they're progress, because we have one more month. Um, I wanna thank, uh, sorry, F V M S. I don't know how they did it, they actually hit every single date of every single on point, given all of the rain that we had, that is amazing. Yeah, 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 that is amazing. The other schools had to pivot a little bit, they're still on pace, you know, they just had to move their dates, because they kept getting rained on. So, um, we're all on pace there. Um, we're reviewing, sometimes I'm there and I do it with them and I take notes. Sometimes I go back and review the, uh, video of the event, pay a particular attention to specific items, and we did feedback on that. Our schools really dialed on this and, um, really getting more and more efficient as a result. So this is on pace, this will be a yes, I'm very confident in that. And, um, this one here, this hundred percent success of communicating with Titan, this has actually been really interesting. Sometime about mid-March, we realized we had kind of plateaued, and we were still missing a good fifty, sixty people. Now, the thing I wanna say that's critical, everybody's important in emergency, obviously, but in a way, the communication is more important with certain people, like the ones who are with kids. Certificated, we're a hundred percent, we have been for a while. Um, office staff who often have particularly important roles, but we do have folks who don't have computers at all, right? We have folks who, we actually have one, um, employee doesn't even have a phone, right? So we're never gonna get to a hundred percent on this one, because, uh, gentlemen doesn't have a phone. But, uh, what we did find was we're a lot of these folks who, um, and, and I got a big shout outs to our staff and the folks who work with kids and are concerned about safety. Very, very few people said, I don't want the app at all. And the app's really important, because it's that two-way conversation we've been training all year, it's really, really important. And almost no pushback on that, but there are some folks, uh, especially when we don't have computers and aren't, you know, as clear of what we're trying to do, and they weren't sure they wanted the app on their phone. So I've been working with the site, um, A Ps to reach out to the folks individually, almost universally, I think it's actually a hundred percent. Everybody we've reached out to who had a phone has agreed to allow us to text them, um, these alerts. So we've gotten all the way up to only twelve folks left, and, um, we're gonna, I'm confident we're gonna get to almost a hundred percent, except for the one that's on the phone. So we're, but we're, we're really, really good shape and, um. Right, and actually, the other thing, um, that's interesting is there are some sites that you know that don't have great cell reception. So in those sites, we're encouraging the site leadership, and they're doing a great job of this, to go to teachers and try to get them to get their phone numbers anyways, we have a redundancy of communication. This has been, Titan has been probably one of the coolest things we've done this year. I've got a lot of feedback from teachers, like, I can now reach out for help. Um, and that's one really good thing about this too, is we're trying to emphasize two additional things, they're super simple, but I think as a teacher, you can hear it. In an emergency, if somebody's life or limb is in jeopardy, call nine-one-one, don't question it. We've got great support in this city, they never question once us calling it. We wanna empower all staff to call nine-one-one in an emergency. You think somebody's in, just call it, we'll deal with it later. What's cool is Command Center will know right away. So it's like putting Titan out anyway. The other thing is, we want staff to know, and this is something I think we need to keep reiterating. You don't know what to do, you can't find the Titan app, you dropped your phone, it's about eight, eight, eight. You go to the Command Center, we'll get you help. So just kind of this, this stuff that all boiled down here, it's really good training guide, and, um, super simple, and hopefully, it deserves everybody. So feeling good about these, um, like I said, we're gonna get there. And last but not least, uh, define, uh, critical positions with security, that's like the main thing here, folks can boil down to perimeter security this. Been talking about it from day one until now, um, high, high, high priority. Um, if there's an open gate, there should be a security body there, and that's what we've been working on this whole year. And we have, um, early on, we had some, not never a lot, just for the record, you know, the monthly incidents were never like scary. Um, but things happen, like sometimes there's an event, something to know about it, there's a gate open. So we're trying to make it a hundred percent, never, ever, ever, there are a perimeter door open, they'll be there. It's, it's not, there's a lot going on between J P A and everything else. We have not reached a hundred percent in a month yet, but we whittled that number pretty far down, I think recently is lowest four. Um, you think of all of the things happening at all the sites, that's a low number, it's not good enough, uh, we're gonna keep pushing for zero. So we have met this goal of reducing by twenty-five percent. That, I wasn't sure what number to put at the beginning of the year, that wasn't necessarily an ambitious, I thought it wasn't the time. Um, so, you know, we'll work on that next year, but this has been a high, high priority, um, with all of my conversations with all of our units, whether N A S T A or C S E A. And I think we're really, um, we've always been pretty tight at this, but I think we tightened up even more this year, we've made it a high priority. So that's it, and thanks to, uh, Scott and Ken for helping us out with some aspects of redundancy with their team, you know, um, that's been helpful as well. So that's me, um, thank you to everybody involved in this, we feel great here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm standing, associate director of the identification. Um, you've got a few goals in front of you, I do have two red X's. Um, this year, we've been working with a consultant that has been on going for a couple of years. And, you know, I, after working with this consultant for a numerous I C's, great, excellent, but the process, I want to show that's difficult with the past couple of years that we've had a policy, but it's not to it. I had a community with both these schools and the theater projects, people played. But the nice thing is, more than you, Raphael and Will and Fonder Solari, you're able to go and have another bit kind of new A B consultant. So this process is gonna start, I think, in a couple of weeks. So I will be the first one to be working with our new consultant to get the theater projects back online. Um, a lot of it was just making sure that we are purchasing the equipment, that's basically responsible. While I understand these standards for certain things, we customize things when snows, hot and dry, it's very hard to fix. And we need to get things fixed to appear strictly, especially with the amount of programs we have going on at each of the sites, how much they're used by staff and students. So that was one of the things that we just kind of halted and stopped and really look back at, like, are we being desperately responsible with this? The answer was enough. So a big part of that was taking that step back and then restarting that. So when we will be restarting, we'll kind of. Um, the three that are in progress are all tied together with our cybersecurity. So this year, um, our insurance company for the district is working hiring that we have, um, standards that are not in tier one cybersecurity. Uh, we've been meeting with Resolute Guard, so Carthick and myself, these are network administrator, have been living with them monthly. Um, they've been on the back end scanning our networking systems, making sure that everything is up to date, running, that we are locked down as much as we can. Uh, we found about three devices that were open, so they had been taken off of the network. There were devices, like teachers, that they just don't get rid of them, but they're not secure. So they had to take them offline, but we can still use the program, we just want to pay more as a fee. Um, Resolute Guard is awesome. We're in a that process with them right now. Uh, they said that we have a gold star standard here, which is awesome, and Carthick and we need instrumental working with them. And also our work with Resolute Guard and then with our insurance company, um, they're gonna use Carthick and myself to talk with other districts about what it is that we're doing, how we're doing it, and how we're being responsible with cybersecurity. So that's really testing the two, perfect for work that he was in, like, along with them. Um, so a lot of this work is in progress. The last thing that's kind of holding us up right now is that multi-factor authentication, which I kind of moving to you guys. Um, in the board communications. A big part of that is talking with other districts, seeing what they're doing, and right now, it's still kind of a hot pot. And instead of jumping in, I wanna make sure that we're being responsible with having staff understand what it is, how it's going to be used, and the most appropriate device application that we're gonna use with them. So I'm hoping to roll that out, um, over the summer, and that's gonna kind of be with all cans on deck. And, you know, personnel services, working with N I T, working with Dustin, and making sure that all of our programs are secure once that we. Um, and then the last one is, or there's two more, uh, working with our specialty data unit placement, so all of our access points have, um, have been categorized. So what you have in front of you, the information, how we improve, figured out which, um, items need to be replaced over a timeline with estimated prices, often for the next three years. Uh, so that's what we're kind of working on. We've successfully got our worst batch in, and they've all been updated. Uh, we've worked with our A grade consultants to get all their deals, um, equipment in, and then also do free, we'll put them in the summer. And then the last thing is our voicemail system and phones. We are fully voice, which is awesome, and we're just closing out with our finalizing in, uh, voicemail, and then we will do them tomorrow. So that's it from her.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, good, good afternoon, uh, board members. Um, so for this next one, it's, uh, we're presenting for facilities, uh, department schools of excellence. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to the board. We have a new kind of format with facilities, uh, and Mr. Ken Haas is here today to present on the, on the different events we have had. But just, uh, the different structure that we have now with, uh, having Scott Brewer has really impacted us in a positive manner, and we're thankful to report for that. So with, I wish you all bring it over. And also, Mr. Scott Brewer, if you could.
Hello, everybody. Good, uh, thanks for taking, like, your presentation. Um, I'd like to introduce Scott Brewer, uh, he's our coordinator for facility services and also helps out, and I've been so much overlap issue, operations. And now we are exactly right here about the daily service. So.
Be a great man.
Uh, Scott Brewer. Um, so the person where you're talking about, and no, that I know he likes red X's so much more, it wouldn't be very hard to get some more of those, so.
I mean, honestly.
So, um, for a part of your department maintenance plan, um, uh, I, I didn't wanna talk a little bit about the purpose of the plan, it originally featured in the latter part of two thousand and eighteen, was primarily committed to maintenance backlog. So starting in July third, we're doing our fourth year of our guidance for maintenance plan, so part of what I'm doing, we're hoping to extend that out for, on this own video, so I have, we sit for five years, where we get away. But the, the next few years, it'll be considerably different than the last few years, because we had so many, we've been very, we've come back with this for a long time, and we've got so much facility information going on that, you know, committed to place here in the next couple of years. I do wanna mention, I've never been in a district where I've had so much support for the facilities and upper management, it's actually happened. It's a unique situation, I have to say, before, for that support and helping to cover management out of cabinet. Um, which we need, we need opportunity to, uh, provide excellent facilities for school, for our kids, and our staff. Really appreciate that, so we, I have to stress, I will leave that as, you know, very well, so thank you for that. Um, we, our, um, project schedule for combination for, uh, three to twenty-two, twenty-three, this year all, and we, uh, we were able to incorporate a few, uh, additional items that weren't in the mission plans, actually, some of the frontline rehabilitation work that did. And then we were eliminating certain projects. And then we were eliminating certain projects that we had scheduled in the twenty twenty year uh. For the annex, though, I mean, as an example, because, you know, certain certain buildings are have a different disposition in the future. So we're just finding instead of like. So my point is the the permanent is uh plan is a living plan that. Changes as we, as our needs change, but as our uh uh housing, for example, depending on additional funding for HVC work, some of that money will help us just move our permanent's fund. So as things change, we pivot and move with that. Um we are on schedule to complete projects listed um. For the twenty three point four this year, most of that work happens during the summertime and during the last week, it's been a very effective short winter, adapting back to same. Um and we'll be back in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five years to eliminate certain projects. Um and add other stations in the high school, uh uh injured water, remaining, things like things that weren't on the. Um and uh. I spoke a little bit about uh moving on and the exciting plan after our twenty seven, twenty year, so that we have a consistent budget plan. Um and now we move into our work order request, which um is is a work in progress and. As we really start to dig in and evaluate things, you know, you we learn things from different departments. So I I just have to touch on a couple of examples. Sometimes workers, there's so many either for a workforce system, they come in. Emails, sometimes phone calls. Um they can be as simple as a flickering light, um they have a loose screw, uh something very simple. They can be as involved as full on gauge, or at least what I mentioned is. That whole body meets and I started as the symbol of competition with the uh back strong, uh Wade Roach and myself, uh talking about clean partitions and B one oh nine, and now it's really a large project that will take care of. So the workforce system sort of catch all for everything that we want. So when we see that twenty four hour response time. It was sort of a wake up call, saying, well, some of these things turn into larger projects that take an extensive amount of time. So um. One of the things I did to take care of the smalls, I call it, really a little turn the screw, change the light, all of the things that I think. Is we have one of our tradesmen in particular, who's multi skilled, won't let down with it. And so instead of. I'll I'll use a ceiling tile. A ceiling tile stain could be from a roofing, could be from a plumbing leak, could be from a condensation line of an air conditioner. So if I send the air conditioning guy out to look at it, it might be condensation line, if that's not what it is, might have to call a plumber, etc. So. Our multi skilled person, okay, you know, capable of handling many of the multitasking, and he doesn't, that's actually within the job description. So that's really affected and improved our response time. He's able to throw and take care of some of the multi trade things. Um and then when he finds something that does need specific intervention from the trade specific person, he communicates for us, not as a supervisory goal, but we we're building camaraderie in the team. So if people are able to call, call each other and work with each other without that official, hey, the boss has told me to do this, which is a really important thing. And that's that's really part of the team, you know, we're working on with the end of the part. So we are on on track to um have that twenty four hour response time for looking at things, but I don't think we'll ever get to the point where every. Situation can be resolved in twenty four hours, because some of them are in expensive projects. Um but especially now having a help on the construction side of things, we can let in on certain things. Uh we're well as well to support teams and address things like hold on center. Um but with the small stuff, we're really making progress from the tiny. Uh but we won't disappoint for a hundred percent of twenty four hour response. It's just. Almost impossible, but we're really improving. One of the things that one of you can make is part of the work with Raphael. And Matt, uh he spent considerable money uh on overtime for maintenance staff. Part of that is because we take it for a lot of things while we have staff on on site. So my goal is to take so that. Money that we've been spending last over years on overtime and actually create a night maintenance, a special support division. Um it's gonna be a real help if we're able to do that. It'll give um two staff members and Scott's here, the means. Uh the ability to do so many different jobs, seventy hours in a row without interruption, that might so even paint jobs and things like that, very hard to do, like that done. Plumbing jobs, for example. Um we had to shut the water down from building to take care of water, to bring all the waters to run a bathroom, things like that. So. Uh you know, worker response, the worker system, the worker process, the complex, it has a wide range of projects. And so we're really making sure that we take care of the small, as quickly as possible, and then get projects that need attention in the planning stages. It's an ongoing process. Um and uh. That's where we are with that. Principal services. This is my favorite, uh red. So as I tried to create a principal survey, um really had that, so what are we trying to accomplish? And what can a principal tell me with checking the box or writing on one set of one that's really gonna not only build report, capture the conversational aspects of staffing issues. So teacher complaints, it's gonna be very hard to capture that. So. Um I've been working with Craig Bubbe and um one of my monthly inspections, um what we did is we went around together and we looked at the site and. Were able to really converse about staffing issues, things like bulletin boards that need to be, you know, put in school so that it's been displayed at work. And. So it really gives a chance to kind of interact together, and I want to agree that scenario with each one of our principals and our assistant principals that have facilities to be responsible for. So I have not executed on delivering on the principal surveys. I want to take a little bit of reflecting, it's gonna be more, it'll be more. And actually have conversations about things while we're onsite for a couple hours at a time. And I think it's gonna be a much better job.
That's in progress. It's not no idea.
Actually, I we did deliver on the survey portion, we did a little bit of a. Um we're going into a professional development. Scott's really been doing a great job giving the professional development. Um I'm gonna let him speak on a couple of issues there.
Hi, thanks for uh joining us. Uh professional development, monthly, we have our team come together. We have uh. Meetings with whether training associates or wax or chemical and. Uh service provider for all of our products with these schools. We'll get together and discuss ladder safety. Any number of things that cause us to maybe lose time at work, work moves, complaints, things of that nature. Addressing slip trips and balls, anything to keep us safe on the job. Becoming uh becoming more aware of our products, our frequencies, our planning, our techniques, things of that nature, whether it be equipment or new products that hit the market. And the other area that I focus on a lot is doing weekly, random and monthly inspections. Going through the sites with our team. And going through classrooms, health offices, facilities, making sure that we're clean, on par, on target. Uh in in grading the the team out and then following back up with them, going back through and and inspecting the sites. It generally takes about a hundred hours a month to go in when they're not working, where there's no staff, no students. Following up with them, whether it be at night or early in the morning, to make sure that we're providing a clean, safe environment for our site.
And I know, and I'm, I want to undersell that, you know, and thanks Scott for a great, great job on that. Um but um we've been doing a lot of PV, and I really am thinking for Scott and Ken. This is something the district really turned a corner. You can call Keenan. Keenan was so excited at the fact that we're actually utilizing a lot of their free resources to keep our staff safe. So I think this is a big plus on our on our team, just being able to get our PV. It 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 came at no cost to the district. I'm not sure, you know, it's it's it really is a great. Uh advantage, um having Scott coordinating that, and our staff is really great.
It is great. They come in monthly and it is free. They, our our guys like it. They get to get team bond, get together, figure out what's working at different sites. So it's a full.
And the last thing I want to speed on is our reports. Um so our goals uh was to reach a fifty percent completion or a thirty four findings by March. We actually completed uh of of the twenty two, twenty twenty three report, but it's only twenty seven cases, but we're creating based on that reporting. Uh we completed a hundred eighty of eight, which is quite. Completion rates, we're ahead of our goal, puts us on target to meet all of our. Fifty four findings by our next year's report, which comes in our report for tick inspection, but we'll prefer it in late July before school starts. And the process is about over. I must have always. Have our scoring go up and have less fifth findings, but there's always. Uh I I I said in in my uh inventory, neighbor, a couple of pictures, a couple of examples. So some of the fifth findings are very simple, can be as simple as a bathroom that was clean. Uh where, you know, let's say, we invited a time before the soudeans were there, so, you know, that that actually got less, there would be quite a few findings. Um at um what it's, we're doing a lot of work at, and I I actually sort of made your expectations, I'm like, you know, we're we're under construction, we're doing this, you know, that, it's, oh, bathroom is still dirty. So he he thinks on that. So some of the findings are simple like that, very involved. Other ones, a little picture of the evidence inside. Um there's a couple cabinets in there, both are reading areas of ice. Um these areas uh. They gave the turtles. So basically, I had to replace the cabinets and the counters and things, but for long, they were, the floors haven't pressed. So we're talking, you know, it's a fit finding, it's gonna be. You know, take months, five, six weeks, maybe us. To actually take care of. This is the original equipment, but there's a bait and then had to happen. So sometimes small findings, it's just a simple picture. Can result in a pretty major comparison. So I just want to take a little play with not all simple things, more more complex things, more time, a lot more funding. Um and but we are definitely, I'm talking about really actually proud, our fifth scores have been going up consistently each year. Um we're in the mid to upper nineties at a percentile on each of our schools. And um you know, our goal is to reach that level of exemplary status, which is between ninety nine and a hundred percent success. And uh our principal would be very helpful with that, or to think, you know, there are things that our staff have behavioral issues, such as storage, you can pour it across the walls and things like that. That we also get paid on our fifth, so that's one of the things this year. And so when we're ever gonna get that exceptional level, so we have a full, full eye into everybody and to the premium teachers and. Uh but we're getting closer. We got great cooperation, great collaboration and um. We're, I'm proud, I'm proud of my people, we're doing a great job. I'm also grateful that you supported the way it's our department's are, so thank you for that.
We need to go towards to construction. Again, uh we made a lot of improvements with our with our construction and Mr. Will Croft.
All right, I'm going to thank you for allowing us to hug our goals here. And um first of all, I want to say that since I've been here, there is so much support from Raphael up to Dr. Brady, then sort of those. Or memory and our view of what's that. But um so our first goal was to update new facilities master plan. So to touch on that, um that is in progress. Um as of this morning, I got a report that we'll have our uh our needs assessment complete by the end of this, pretty early next week. Which will move us into the facility master plan, which wants to get those results. Uh that needs assessment, basically, uh we have a bunch of engineers and our financial R T, own twelve sites. And reviewing the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical systems and the uh uh visibility and access uh to each school, they should work to find. Um the next three, four things we have, we met our goal and um I'm happy to say with for Raphael. Um our construction updates, you know, we provide monthly reports every month. We include them in our um. Uh our board connection, and then also we posted on our website uh that since September, we've had a monthly report every month. Uh we also do the construction updates, like what we need to draw. Uh weekly meetings, Raphael and I meet with uh our financial R T team every Fridays. Uh we review everything that's uh urgent or needs attention from us. And also, we go through board items that we'd like to place in the agenda of the board meeting. Um and probably all their concerns over this stuff. Uh our district presidents, we, as you know, we have our financial R T team at each site, and also uh. Their their bond program management team is here at the high school as well. And then along with them being on site, uh consistently, I visit the site every once in a while. I gotta stay in the high school even more efficient than our Dale, because it's so close to my office, but I was at our Dale this morning. Uh I try to make it a point to go there as often as I can. Um and then the final thing is audit concerns that came up with Moss Adams before, I think Raphael, you want to talk about that?
Oh, yeah, really, it's an interesting time, as as you want to, we addressed the audit concerns, uh you know, the performance financial audit, we answered those, we implemented. A lot of great things to uh make sure that we're not uh moving forward with any of the findings and that we're actually correcting the things that has been uh that have been found in the audit. So we we were able to answer those. We also put a link in there to the performance audit where it has our answer. So uh thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, uh real quick, part of my my goal for athletics. When I took this job and Dr. Brady and I had long chats about increasing the number of participants to be able to play and provide opportunities for them. These people involved in educationally based athletics. Back in my days as a coach and a given discipline. Um I found that there's a direct correlation to kids' behavior positively when they're involved in things. Kids want to be part of something. Um in the past three months, since we are a football coach, he's on campus shift, I've been working in the weight room with the kids, the football kids that want to play. We're getting more kids that come in, they want to be part of something. And the best that I've been trying to do. So a lot of my goals are to do, to establish other things. We're gonna establish a girls' golf programs for the first time since I've been here next fall. We have. Six to seven young ladies that want to participate in women's golf, which is awesome. Uh three or four of them right now are playing on the boys' team. So sometimes when there's a JV match, the other school, when you have a couple of kids, you send our, I'm ready to go. Very welcome to join to play next spring, next fall, or they're happy to go play, quite a boot. But anyway. So a lot of my goals are that. We want to create here, provide opportunities for the middle schools, to increase our offerings, there to get more and more kids. So that that part of it is what I'm trying to do, and we're, these are in progress. Um. What is my next one? Create a more comprehensive summer program for the high school athletics. We're trying to get our high school teams to be. More competitive, right? And I always think to say, hey, it's Orange County, but where I came from down there was the hotbed of athletics. Those guys practice year round, and it's the fact, why, and they wonder why our teams aren't as competitive. Well, we have to get to that point where we use that summer program for a whole nother month of actual intense learning. So we're now, we can improve our teams. We're getting there slowly, but true. So that's um. So we're we're gonna be better this summer. I've got more of our coaches now involved, their teams in summer programs. They're gonna play. Summer volleyball, summer basketball, those kinds of things that are playing other schools, so we get out and we get that competition going. Uh updating our athletic facilities to proper standards, the new facilities, or children's ones are being built. I have to thank Ken. We have worked very closely together to get the Conheim put back together. We're do redoing the upstairs basketball courts, those are coming in. Equipment's in, they're gonna put it in actually Thursday morning. Um we've got that going on. Um middle school weight facility, that thing has been uh. Great, I uh it's working out well. We've got all those kids telling how many kids we have working at the school right now that are uh.
About thirty.
Okay, so we got thirty extra kids that are spending time in a weight room. So when they're in the weight room and they're working and are part of something, they're not on South Federal. They're not in Century City. So by providing that, there's a byproduct of educationally based athletics. Now we got kids doing things that are positive, they're hanging out with other kids that are positive, and they're not out. Uh be honest about it. Um create a yearly plan with V H triple A, refresh V H H S athletic equipment. So the the uh V H triple A, how we, I've never been in data, we put together a yearly program for those sports. That when every three years, they will repurchase uniforms for us. So we know now going into next year, who's on site. So we get ahead of that with the coaches. In terms of what they're gonna buy, what they have, how much money they have, and we get that done. So we're not having to worry about whether our teams are properly equipped and whether they look good or not. So that we're we're uh we're working on that. Uh it's done, but it's just, it's kind of an ongoing thing there. Um sports offerings at the middle school in terms of uh. Other offerings, I would like to put tennis in. We have a number of kids that want to play tennis. Um and softball and baseball sometime if we get a facility for that. I talked to a young lady when we had the track meet here a couple of weeks ago. Her name's Angela Brown. I think her name is that, or Angelica Brown. And she works at a um middle school, and they're part of the Celtic League, where they offer other sports that FIA doesn't offer. But we can participate in FIA and move some of our teams into a different conference where we can now have more participation. So we're working on that. So that that is something I'm excited about. Uh V H triple A is also gonna work hard with, they want to get you part and parcel with the middle school parents. And get into there, and so they can start helping out in middle school and try to foster that. Um the group of parents as they come through. As the. The V H triple A has come about, but a lot of those people were back from the early seventies and the sixties and the fifties and whatever. Um that the group is becoming older, they need fresh blood, they need more people to get in there, and so we're trying to work with. Um, that the group is becoming older, they need fresh blood, they need more people to get in there and so we're trying to work with. Um, move it down to the middle school as well as. Um, and then explore uh, the possibility of putting in, I haven't worked with uh. Sarah or Craig yet about a fifth grade sports program next year through FIA that they offer for a fifth grader. That we can get competitive athletics going on at that level. And I would be kind of excited. We had a track meet here a few weeks ago for the middle school kids. And they also had a division three and there was a bunch of little fourth and fifth graders running around the track to participate. It was pretty cool. So there's that. And, and then my big ask here is I always wanna put on a spring track meet and I just didn't get it. With all the stuff going on. So, but otherwise, I'm excited. I think we're providing opportunities. We had a great uh, women's beach volleyball program to finish up this print. Um, I said girls' golf, we got flight football for the women in the fall, because our bodies play. So uh, we're getting there. So, thank you guys.
She's the director of physical services. Let me just say, she's hit the ground running, uh, not running, she runs. Uh, just, uh, you know, I'm really happy with, with our team and how it is going, uh, moving along. So just real quickly, uh, our ongoing meeting with principals, we, we, we are having those meetings with them. We actually spent with our principals, with some of our principals and we're meeting with some of them later this week for like their budgets for next year. So we're having more proactive meetings uh, with our principals, making sure that they look at their budget, that they're understanding their budget. But not that they don't, uh, just, just being able to provide support to our, yes, tonight, shout out to you guys all. The key thing is understanding. The way in which they've worked this year to make them understandable. And uh, and my little bit, big part of supporting us with getting some of these templates. Thank you, Drew, for that, for those kind words. Uh, but we're, we're continuing that, trying to make it easy, understandable and transparent. Um, in regards to the business service, the teacher manual, I don't know if you wanna talk about that.
One of our main goals is to, as you know, the business service and physical department, many different areas. You know, you have purchasing department, cable and benefits, accounts payable, the budgeting development, uh, fiscal reporting. So there's many parts. And so we would like to create this as a manual, that's gonna be a point of reference. For the entire district to know who to contact, you know, also have um, procedures for us to know like how to submit for reimbursement. Uh, for mileage, for um, how to use the bit of recognition. Sometimes we have new staff members at the site level. So we wanna have this movement sent um, template manual that's gonna help us all as a district. Be successful and have that point of reference and context of in our uh, business department. I've been meeting with Karen and Accountable and working together with um, that plan of like her whole process and what she needs and what we're gonna have. The requirements that she needs for reimbursement. I've been meeting with that is like cable and so we've been over timesheet, fifty years and different things like that. For warranty for that, it's that, um, it has a bunch of information that's possible and it'll be available on our website for everyone in the district. Sort of like have that point of reference and we're all on the same page when it comes to this.
Thank you, Manu. And, and that's really important as our times change, processes need to adapt with it. Like before in the past, for example, like we needed some, like, like an original receipt. Nowadays, receipts come in email, right? And so it's like, we need to update our product. And Manu's already started using uh, Canva, which I was really impressed by. And I know Rebecca will probably help us out with that. Financial reporting, we've been able to successfully produce our financial reports. Uh, our first interim came in on time, second interim came in on time, uh, our audits are in. Uh, we've, we've really successfully produced the reports, but also Lego has given us feedback that all are, that they are in alignment with our assumptions, which is always good news. To get that feedback from Lego. So we've been able to do that. Um, and uh, really it's a, it's attributable to our team. That, you know, although we're down, our, our current fiscal right now, unfortunately, but the team has been able to come together and support, so we get these reports done on time. So uh, we're really happy with that. In regards to the quarterly site survey, we're, we're, we're getting that prepared, getting that ready to go. Maybe it could have been, I don't know, but I feel like we've done some work on it already to kind of get those sites uh, surveyed. To see really where we are in regards to our, our resources. One of the things we're trying to do is uh, speed up the method in which we reimburse. Uh, you know, do mileage reimbursements, conference reimbursements, sometimes it takes a little long. And so we're trying to, you know, get those types of things based on, based on deep bed data and hearing from the sites. And so those are all the types of things that we're trying to get from those surveys. So that, and finally, the audit report. In regards to the audit report, we presented it to the board, both the, the financial audit, the bond financial audit and the performance. But uh, the bond performance audit, all of those audits, we've been uh, successful in getting those completed. Um, and our auditors are pretty uh, happy with our, with our work. Our auditors actually already came out for the new audits, they've already audited some of our sites. So we're really happy with the way the audit process has transpired at the district. So uh, that is, in the interest of them, I know that we're wrapping up. So that's pretty much all we have. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can use that last slide. And then uh, if you are not part of cabinet, then may have a question from the board from the last uh, slides. Then I wanna, I, I give you a, a promise that you're gonna hard out if by five o'clock, if you have to leave, you have to leave. I just wanna just kind of finish up with a slide here. Uh, Rebecca and I are gonna go over a couple of things and I don't wanna repeat what was said. Um, but one thing that I wanna talk about is just the recognition of our school district. Um, when it first came into the district almost seven years ago, um, we really didn't have a presence in uh, LA County. Um, and beyond, we just really didn't go to. Um, and now we've really started to get out. Um, we've been presenting in conferences, we've been involved, we've been at the table. It's no longer a shock when somebody says. Oh, you're from V H C, you know, no one comes to. Um, that goes for our board too, like going to professional development conferences for our board. Where we didn't typically go before and now we are in everything, including um, the LAKSTA. Uh, which is the LA County uh, Trustee Association. You know, we have representation on the executive board through uh, Mrs. Wells. Um, we're hosting the dinner. Um, we've been at the CSVA uh, conferences. We were just in Washington. Uh, representing our school district. So those are things that were never done before, that fit really nicely into some of these categories about. Recognition in some of our programming. Um. Some of the areas you've heard about in high school, like US News and World Reports and the rankings, you've heard about what some of those challenges are. Um, it's in progress. We are doing, testing now. So we're gonna get some of that data, get some of the rankings are. Uh, about the number of students that are taking E P exam. So that in progress, we'll be able to update you in July. Um, some other areas here with the red Xs, um, well, let me just go BBMS, so uh, applying. Uh, to be an actual school to watch, that application processes are coming up. So that's something that will be in progress. Uh, for doing, uh, for the elementary, uh, we've talked to you a little bit about um, our chronic absenteeism. And that is uh, uh, unfortunately a problem in our district. So when we come back and we start talking to you in July. About what we need to make a priority is our chronic absenteeism in our school district. And we haven't really recovered like a lot of areas after COVID, with people coming back. I think there are people that still think that it's, you know, optional, that would, you know, students sort of hybrid. So that is a problem. But that, that actually puts us in a place where that's squallifies us. And so that's hurting us. Uh, that'll be, you know, with the recognition, but more importantly, the kids, what they're leaving every single day that they're not here. And so there's a parent education piece to that. Uh, there's a, there's a support piece there that we will, we will talk, and we're gonna talk to you about that July. Uh, certainly. Um, others, program highlights, we were already starting to look at um, and filling out applications for the work that the board is doing. Um, at conferences. Um, some of those, those awards are coming up, those deadlines are uh, in June, they're coming up. So we're already working on uh, filling out those applications. Uh, we're happy to do that. We talked about the staff recognition, we had a teacher of the year, uh, we have the nominee, she will be out of high school. She will be our representative. And there's just, there's more areas than this that we're really excited about, that we're getting people out there. And it, it isn't just the title either, like being teacher of the year, but like Dustin being president of the APSA. Or, you know, this entire year on top of his full-time job. And so those are reputations for our school district. That um, uh, that many of us are starting to really kind of, um, you know, just explore and, and, and outside of our school district. That being part of the organization, it's much like LAKSTA, um, and uh, doing work within the state, the county. Are actually better for us to get information firsthand, instead of being waiting for information to be passed out of. Um, and then Rebecca's been talking about the last two.
So I would like to echo what Dr. Brady has just said. And I wanted to create this slide and be really intentional around how we look at the data and making sure it's a measurable goal. We limited to just what's on the screen, right? But we have had just in the last year. So many athletes and you've seen it on Instagram, you've seen it in the LA Times, you've seen it nationally, you've seen it locally in the papers. Um, such an increase in awards, which is great to see, really that recognition of all of our students and ourselves. Putting in that effort together in a partnership with our parents. And to say, we're doing great things here. And our mission is educational excellence and we're achieving that mission. And I think that's a really important note to make, so thank you, but speaking to that. On that note, um, although technically we had the same number four and four. As with this next goal of points, remember June 30th, our national merit scholarship. Um, this year we had two students, Alexandra Faktion and Miles Kotla. Yes, um, who actually were nominated by a White House committee to go on to then be entered into. The US Presidential Smallest Program. And for that was a really big deal for us. And so we said, yes, we do. As always, we have applied for our communications and votes to be the pending. So waiting on those results. Uh, we anticipate that women will have, uh, however, we don't have those results just yet. So that concludes, you know, this section and.
And there we are. And so I, I would say if the board has some questions for um, outside of cabinet. I would really like to be able to, if you don't have questions for um, some of the uh, centers that were earlier. I'd like to be able to let them go, um, because I give them a hard out to five. Um, and cabinet that presented at the end, I want to keep here for the, if you have questions, that I'll try to.
And it's really just a fantastic lot. And I really love you all.
So, um.
That's like.
On camera.
And yeah.
They're getting all this. See you later. Yeah, I think you can make it worse.
So good, so good. Um, so for the technologies and what crossed my mind is that, and looking at BBMS. And um, there's a theater and the equipment that's going in there and really be thinking like, should we be putting this in here as a specifically responsible? My question to you is, is that happening at Elrodale or in a high school, theaters there? Can we and should we be looking at what's expected out there and maybe we think was in there? Because maybe some of those are not completely responsible either and can be changed out.
Yeah, it is all green above. So I can say that we work closely with uh, the high school theater, um, folks, sort of staff. And uh, to make sure we're putting you in kind of like more state of the art, uh, theater equipment and audio and visual stuff. Um, I believe we did the same thing for, for Elrodale, but maybe not in the pants. So maybe that's something we can look at. I don't know if you know about Elrodale.
Yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah, and, and that's why I went for the R and P in the first place. You know, we, we thought, this is, this, you know, someone that, let's put it out there. And get someone that's gonna help us in a transparent way, that's helping us out. And I think we're gonna be reevaluating those things, doesn't this show?
No, I just wanted to add to this conversation in a second because we have good news to mention as well.
I just wanna add, it's something we have before, you were doing a good job, but as Pam mentioned, this is kind of, it's possible enough. So we thought it was a good time to reevaluate.
So we are actively looking at, like, we're, that's all in the process of value engineering that we're, that we're doing for all of our sites. Um, so we're looking at everything. And in fact, I think in, in a few weeks, we'll be presenting, bring this up to, to the board regarding some of the cameras. And uh, just some of the savings that it would have cost.
So much more.
Yeah, next week, so.
That is a great idea to, to, to be look at that.
And the cool part, that was our theater program, we are working with getting them C P E certified, certificates. So then we actually have a new pot of cash to be able to pull from, to be able to support some of those. Yes. And so we just, well, we just got, we just got clear, one of them just got cleared twenty-four hours ago. So we'll start putting them in grants.
The other thing along those same lines is that, um, I thought. This is just a thought as you're being yourself, there needs to have been enough. And that perhaps credit scores could be put up also on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
If you wanna have a medical program and softball, and in the meantime, we don't have softball here. Elrodale will still have been open.
Tim, Tim would love any improvement, like, you know, to our facilities and.
We do, we do have a family presenting soon on softball ideas.
Let's, we'll, we'll get it on.
I'm totally enjoying it. I love it.
It's, uh, yeah, it'll, it'll be a different thing to see how it. R P E kids, they don't do anything. Not except when it comes to pickleball, I'll play pickleball. Yeah, kind of the dress, but they will go up there and play pickleball. That's a great idea. It was good, it was good.
It's not going to be complete for the summer.
We're, we're on track for.
Yeah, we're on track for that to be done. Like that, I know that that's been a real challenge. You know, because we're working around like so many, and I thank you both for it, how difficult that is.
Can you do something with the recording? There should still be recording.
Is that the, with the amount of time that that's occupied? I mean, it's really, you know, it's, it's really, you know, uh, eleven o'clock at night. Until six in the morning is the only real time when, so I appreciate you getting creative because.
So I appreciate you getting creative because.
And how fast we got the third part of it done.
Everyone looks.
They did, and it's like, really, I know you haven't been to do that, and. Um, and then, I mean, saying. I just wanted to say goodbye to our, so many systems that we've changed since you've been here. I mean, it, it's in facilities and maintenance or, uh, in the business, uh, area, everything that you're doing and probably doing that. It's building the garden, building the ground up at the school site. This is not been the norm here at all, these are amazing improvements for this district. I just, I cannot, uh, applaud you enough for the positive impact you're giving to so many areas that some people were. And forehanding as well doing so, so really thank you and all of you, I think, I'm so proud of, um. That they, it really, it, the areas where we're working on, I think, like, and find better ways to do it. Really send energy to them, so I think we're on a pretty great ground. Pretty good test run, I am feeling very good about it, so I want to thank you.
How can I apologize, because we have these wonderful folks and we're talking about, you know, medical, and we're seeing them.
Sure.
And I know that we need for, uh, closing up to get access to Narcan, and we have it on campus, so it'd be a shame. We go down and we don't, why we don't know where it is, and do personal, uh, can't recognize who needs it and.
So first off, I'm always happy to support, partner with any group, uh, student services deserves a lot of credit for that one. Um, they did, uh, a lot of distribution and training for the Narcan that we have, so administrators, nurses, et cetera. So, um, I, I can't take credit for that, all of them here to support. And I think that there's always room to get more training, uh, for staff and more Narcan supplies. I mean, ideally, we would have trauma kits and Narcan in every classroom, where I'm actually working with Dustin now about next year. Getting, um, not just CPR, but stop the bleed and maybe a bus bronchus and trauma kits, preferably in every classroom. Um, so that is something that we're looking to next year, um, you know, it's not cost neutral, right? So, like, actually, you never know, maybe there's a way. Um, so we're looking to that, um, we're already working on a training date, um, I would be happy to work with student services about what we can do to, to get more, um, distribution of skills in Narcan across the district, but I think they've done a great job this year to start it.
I mean, also, you know, you train one group and then there's, you know, turnover, and so I just wanted to bring that, it's like, it's your time, I may have a location of, you know, when they get there. Need a twenty-minute practice on it, maybe.
And one of the things we've done all good, to train the staff with signs of safe and all overdose, I didn't know that. Exactly, it looks like really deep snoring. Right, but it, it was surprising to me and hearing that as well.
Yeah, and, and, and they are, like, be, because of what Narcan can do in such a short amount of time, they are looking at ways to, um, have some sort of dispenser. That's available, you know, it's kind of like with the, um, you know, diffusator, you know, like, like, like having that accessible.
Yeah.
And, you know, but you have to then have a, a device or an apparatus that is accessible again. And people need to know where it's at, and so that's kind of where it's moving, but it's still so new. That it can't be just like, even with JPA, like, you know, it, we need to make sure that that, that full, like our facilities are.
And having, so, right, printer roll. Accessible, but also not easily grabbed, because they're very expensive, right?
So we don't want to get that in the wrong hands.
Right.
Um, I think, I don't know. If there was anything to be, I'm unsure of this. Maybe in this, maybe, maybe this is what it is.
It could be.
I didn't give that credit for how people that.
Explain to you, because I think this is really kind of, this is really important, and was, uh, something that was kind of developed, um, along the way. So through our Titan system, so like, even when there is a drill, like a fire drill, it, that one cheater. So, so when that's being communicated to teachers, the picture of, of that.
That will come pop up.
So your one cheater is right there.
Thank you, in the security section, Mark actually put it in a screenshot, yeah, of exactly what Dr. Brady just said.
Because we, because it's like, you, because we want to have, like, whether it's on the wall.
Yes.
Or whether it's in the, uh, you know, in the bag of supplies, the, the red bag. Like, it's, it's, it's in both places, but even more than that, what's so great is like, easily, or like even a shelter in place. It, it, the one cheater, so you don't even have to get that.
Yes, just put it on for what happens.
You have it, so teachers will get it immediately in three different ways.
Yeah, but I will say.
And you have to grab it.
There's always phones around, that's not the issue. But I will say, having, I probably didn't, or did my home for, or now, having that, they really can, like, if something happens that there's, or they're on active shooter. What am I going to do? If I'm in this class, do I jump up like, for them to have to navigate those considerations, the thrill. And then to hear about Titan and know that a teacher can immediately let the whole world know what happened, it's also, it's very comforting.
Yeah.
Thank you for thinking that.
And, you know, um, Sean, Sean Connor, the manager of the command center, was, uh, one of the folks who went out and found this particular thing. I think they were using it so high, or I can't remember the interior, the exterior of the Super Bowl and rammed at it. Right, so, um, you know, he helped find it, Rebecca and I partnered with Sean to kind of figure out the right one, and I'm, we're really pleased with it, you know.
We see him.
Yeah, it's the best panorama up there.
There's an example in, not to keep it, in the evidence document, um, which if anyone's watching at home, it's attached to the agenda. Um, of the conversation we had just lovely.
True, yeah.
And it's in there exactly, an example of how people responded so quickly, it didn't matter where we were, that the school staff had immediate calls. And knew that they weren't alone, and that was just never possible before, because we'd have to create these text change. And then if someone had Android and they didn't have an iPhone, who can get all on the same call? And it was really crunky, so what happened?
Yeah, I love that you, that that's in there, because it is really, you'll see responses from all of us, how could I help?
Yeah.
How could I help?
I mean, there's a part, you know, we are people that are, they are, for this, so this year. So all of these things, okay, started to feel different, just from the drills and, and having that information and having that.
And the, the other part that I've explained to staff as well is like, like, there's also a responsibility that I have to you, is to update you. And that's why, you know, you get inundated when I'm updating you by, uh, a text to you, because I'm, I'm. Carrying you, if you, it, as it's coming in, like, you're getting it at the same time I am. And so that's never happened before. I mean, before it was like, okay, when, when the incident was over, I would take up summary and say, oh, you're, but, but you're getting it right away, like, the student that just faked it. And then like, you know, and it's great, because I was a little bit worried about doing that, because I thought, oh, I'm going to get questions. Because I don't have the full story yet, but nobody's done that, and you're like, and then it's great, because then I'm able to update you with every single step that comes in. You're notified within seconds of me.
It's really great.
I think the board and the community and the city, um, deserve a lot of the credit for this. You know, um, the commitment to this program is unparalleled than any public school. And the reason I, I'm more and more confident in that is we bring vendors, like, these are like security system vendors, like Titan. Or like that weapon system that we're going to try, like, they come into the command center and they can't believe it. They, they, and they're at schools, universities all over, they, they don't see things like what we're doing here, it's really remarkable. I'm having to be part of it, help like bring it all together, but like I said, from the cameras from the city and the JPA and communication with partners. And that's, all of it, and, and our GPA, like, yeah, it, it's remarkable. Agreed, like, I guess.
Bringing that back, I know. We meet every day, we have a cheat today, I mean.
When you're in, it's, it's great, but I'm, I'm bad at not saying.
I, I know, well, I mean, it's related, and it's, it is, the relationship is strong.
It's getting tired, and, and getting tired.
It's good, it's, it's an amazing team, and I think based on feedback from the board, like, this is like, we would have never been, we talked about it before you got here. And I just, with the whole team, was just, like, this pushed us to, um, you know, a different level of probability and everything's supporting. And being vulnerable, like, being okay as educators, same, Jim, son, like, that was hard work.
I think, I think, I think, I think everything was, was, I think, I think, that, or we nailed it, or.
We, we ordered that. Exactly, and to continue this planning loop that we have now, we come back in July, because these things don't go away. We, we now get tighter focus, and there'll be some new things, and there's some things that will be already done, that we don't have to spend that time on. There's new things too, you know, the behavior part of it, that needs to be incorporated, that has to be, you know, and, but that authentically now has happened. And now that will be part of our conversation and part of our planning.
Right.
Because if that's a long-term investment.
Thank you.